Recording in progress.
Thank you for joining us for the Board of Commissioners meeting on January 31st, 2020. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and the United States of America, and to the Republic of Georgia, stand one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as a rather unique item, we do have a public hearing today on Monday at 1:00.
Want to thank Sharon Keith for helping organize that for today.
Yes.
Chad Centola, Director of Solid Waste. The public hearing item before you today is proposed modifications to the services and rates being provided by Cascade Disposal in their unincorporated franchise area with Deschutes County. I wanted to start with just a quick overview of what we discussed at the work session last week. First, just a little refresher on universal versus subscription service. Universal service is cited as a package offering, and the county has a history of using this approach when we've expanded to recycling services in areas where we haven't had recycling in the past. Typically, the universal service has a higher participation rate. It's recognized as an industry standard. And also, for the state of Oregon, it's recognized as a qualifying service to meet the opportunity for Recycling Act requirements. The other approach is subscription service, where customers get to select off of a menu of services that they would elect to use. Typically, it has a lower participation rate, especially for recycling services, and the cost can vary depending on the participation level. One of the items to note, it's not recognized by the state of Oregon as a qualifying program to meet the opportunity for Recycling Act requirements. A little footnote on the Opportunity Recycle Act. Currently, we meet all of our obligations through the offerings we have at our rural transfer stations. So, the debate between, or the issue between providing subscription or universal services is really not part of the consideration here, because we already meet those requirements with the transfer stations. So, I wanted to go over quickly the service area that Cascade Disposal offers. So, the blue in the shaded map there is the service, the franchise area that Cascade Disposal provides for the county. It's broken into two zones. One is the rural service zone, and then the balance of the area is the distant rural zone. And Sun River is carved out of the distant rural zone because of some unique challenges they have in getting services down there. And one thing we did not mention at the work session last week, the Sun River Service Zone includes Crosswater, which is that little finger that extends to the south of Sun River on the map there. Current services that we offer for rural collection, there is a co-mingle service as part of a universal package for those customers that like to use a service. The disrural collection zone currently only has waste collection. There are no recycling services available to them. And the same with Sun River. They currently just have weekly trash collection service with no recycling available to them. When the board passed the salt waste management plan back in 2019, expansion of curbside recycling services was one of those goals that we included in the plan as far as getting our recycling services up. Kind of related to all this was the fire in Deschutes River Woods last year, as well as other regional wildfires. They brought a lot of awareness to dealing with vegetation management in residences. And since last summer, we've all gotten a number of calls asking for the expansion of, including curbside yard debris collection in the county. So, with Sun River there, a couple of years ago, the Sun River Owners Association approached the county looking for some assistance in relocation of the recycling depot. They were looking at doing some expansions of their public works yard. They approached the county for some assistance on that. During that time, meetings and discussions with the Owners Association, Cascade Disposal, and the Salt Waste Department formulated some approaches to depot construction financing, as well as the addition of residential collection services. Sun River formed a task force and conducted a number of surveys to identify the services that the community desired down there. And recently, the Sun River Board had a, the Sun River Homeowners Association had a vote for using their reserve fund, which did not pass. It required a 60% majority to pass. So, their funding for the recycling depot, which was going to be in part reimbursed by Cascade Disposal, did not pass. So, the final proposal that was developed was intended to maximize the opportunity for enhancing their residential recycling service in Sun River. So, sorry, got ahead of myself there. So, the services in the rural service zone, so again, currently, we have trash and co-mingle recycling as a universal service. Sorry, this is a very touchy pad here. The proposed additions, including adding glass to the bi-weekly co-mingle collection, and then the alternate week have yard debris collection with carts furnished by Cascade Disposal. The rate impact would be an additional $10 per month. And using their basic service for their smallest can, which is a 32-gallon trash can, at $17.75 a month, the new rate would be $27.75 a month. And residents can get larger canned service, which costs them more, but the overall rate increase would be $10 a month regardless of the size of the trash can that the customer is using. For the rural zone, again, they have no curbside recycling collection. So, what the proposal is, is to add bi-weekly co-mingle and glass pickup with yard debris collection in the alternate week. And again, Cascade Disposal would furnish roll carts for the service. For the distant rural zone, that would be an additional $14 a month. Again, looking at their 32-gallon cart service, it would raise the rate to $49 a month. For Sun River, they have no recycling collection. And the containers furnished by the resident for trash collection, the proposal would be to add weekly co-mingle collection and glass collection as a universal service. And the customer would furnish a 32- to 35-gallon can for the co-mingle collection, and Cascade Disposal would furnish a glass tub for glass containers. And the rate impact, like the distant rural zone, would be $14 a month, bringing the rate up to $49 a month for weekly trash and weekly co-mingle and glass collection service. So, the pathway for the board order for this is, so a week ago today, we had a work session, and today we'll have the public hearing. And we'll keep the record open until midnight, February 14th, for the submittal of comments. And then, we're planning to return to the board on February 28th for deliberations and hopefully adoption of an order at that time. So, unless the board has any questions for me, I'd ask if you open the, for public submittal at this point.
You want us to take the public comments at this moment? Is that what you said?
Yes, the verbal comments.
Yes, I know, because then we actually have to go through Zoom and go through the phone, too. And because we don't have to do anything legal, same, we don't have any...
Conflicts or...
Yes, conflicts of interest. Okay, so we don't have to do that. Oh, good. Okay. Yes, Commissioner DeBon.
So, just a sense, I'm looking for a sense of the big picture here. So, Deschutes County is a franchise offerer. We have multiple franchise operators. We're talking about Cascade Disposal in this one kind of midsection of the county.
Correct.
Is that correct? So, there's no other operators involved in this at this time?
Correct. We'll be revisiting with Republic Services some point in the future. They're working on getting their thoughts for a proposal to get to, whereas we just haven't heard anything formal from them yet.
Yep, just trying to understand, you know, the scope of what we're looking at here. And then also, yard waste pickup in, you know, Deschutes River Woods is, you know, tangible. It's something that could be done. And then the issues at Sun River, you know, recycling relative to the recycling depot. So, my point is, you know, this is just a couple issues in that service area that are coming together, that we're having a kind of a proposed rate and service structure changes. Is that correct? I'm just trying to get the big picture here about...
Yeah, that's correct. Some was driven by Sun River's request for some assistance with their recycling depot, but also generally in the community, asking for additional opportunities for recycling at the house, using the fires.
Yeah, it's a couple, kind of a couple issues in a little bucket here for this service area, for this franchise operator. And then, do we think of it as the, is the county leading this to solve, you know, these issues? Or is the franchise operator, or the community, you know, who's asking? Who we answering a question to right now, I guess, you know? And obviously, a very public setting that we're doing it in.
You know, I think it's been a joyed effort to date. Working with Sun River Owners Association, trying to gather information and thoughts from the community down there. They've been a player in this, as has Big Cascade Disposal. You know, the county has a franchise for providing the service, so any decisions that will impact rates or the level of service is something that the board has to evaluate and approve.
And then, just one of the other concepts is just for me to understand, there's some pretty passionate input already. Thank you, everybody. But, you know, what are the total services in these footprints possibly? And we can do that afterwards. But, you know, if we're having testimony of X amount of people, how many people are really getting this service? How many are we speaking for as we, you know, make some of these decisions?
Yeah, I've received approximately 40 emails since last Monday on this. And it was a little misdirection. Somebody posted some incomplete information on the Nextdoor app. So, I was getting a lot of people from Three Rivers and Point South thinking that they were part of this, and were thrilled to be getting recycling services, but unfortunately...
Yeah, so, and that's kind of my thought. Are we representing a couple hundred services, you know, a couple hundred homes, or a couple thousand homes? I guess I don't have a feel for that.
I'd be, I'd expect it several thousand homes, you know.
Well, I would, too, but I just don't have the number. So, just trying to put it in all perspective as we do this.
Yeah.
Okay. I do have...
Can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
I'm curious about the rates that were arrived at. I mean, as I was trying to picture how this would all work, just the idea of having to go up to the side yard in Sun River and, you know, deal with, deal with containers and have some kind of like sub-transportation to get you back to the truck, it just seemed like that should cost, I mean, that should take a lot of labor. And I just figured it would cost more. But, you know, it's, you know, providing that bundle of recycling services, side yard in Sun River only costs the same as, you know, adding co-mingle recycled glass and yard debris in the distant, you know, per month. So, is that, is it balanced out? Because in the distant, you know, the distance between, the density of customers is so much lower, that that's where they absorb a bunch of time there, or?
Yes, you're correct. The density and spacing in the distant rural service area is, for the most part, substantially larger than it is in the rural zone. So, the level of effort to do what's being offered for the distant rural is on par cost-wise with providing that weekly walk-up service that they would have in Sun River.
Okay, yeah. I mean, either way, it seems like providing a whole lot of good service for, you know, not that much more per month, and that's impressive. My one other question was just like a historical clarification question. Waste, we've been talking about Waste Connections and Cascade Disposal, and I know they're the same, but, you know, is one, did one absorb the other, or, you know, what is the relationship there?
I'm glad you asked the question, because there's been a little bit of a use of both terms in the office. So, won't go too back far in history, but, so Cascade Disposal was the original franchise that provided service in the area that we're looking at now. And several years ago, they were purchased by Waste Connections, a large national company. And in our staff reports to you, as well as discussion, we've been using Waste Connections and Cascade Disposal interchangeably. As I was preparing this slideshow, I called Irwin Swetnam, the General Manager for Cascade Disposal, and asked him, what is the preferred term to use to name your, to name the company? And as we talked about, we thought we would stay with Cascade Disposal, because I think that's a recognized name throughout the community just because of the history. They are really one and the same, but when it comes down to a formal legal document, that's a conversation we would have with county legal, that's what would go on a legal document. But, the two firms are one and the same.
So, Cascade Disposal is part of Waste Connections, but Waste Connections doesn't have service in our region beyond what's in the Cascade Disposal area? Is that...
In the county, yes, but I, they have a landfill up in Wasco, and I'm assuming they provide service up in that area. I'm not sure where their other franchises are in Oregon, but they are a presence in the state.
But, here in Deschutes County, basically, anything that Waste Connections is doing is through Cascade Disposal.
Correct. And everything is with the county, as far as it goes, is being addressed through this discussion today.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, we do have six people that have filled out, seven, that have filled out paperwork to speak today, and you can also submit written record. So, if there's anyone else that wants to speak, please know that you need to fill out the blue form before I can call on you. So, thank you so much. The first person is Bill Burke. You do have three minutes to testify. So, and we do have your address and everything, but you might want to remind us for the record, your home address.
Watch out for this.
Whoa.
Okay. Are you okay?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Bill Burke, Sun River homeowner. Want to thank the commissioners for having this hearing, as well as for the staff's presentation of the report submitted to you thus far. I'm speaking to you today as an individual Sun River homeowner, but also acknowledge that I'm a member of the Sun River Board of Directors, as well as a participant in the trash, in the task force regarding the recycling center. So, I'm quite familiar with a lot of the issues at hand. Generally, I agree with many of the items in the report. There's one particular thing that I am very concerned about, and that would be moving from subscription to universal. I don't think that will work for everybody. And I think many homeowners that I've spoken to, and again, as an individual homeowner, I was somewhat taken aback and surprised by what had only been discussed as, throughout the task force discussions, as the opportunity for continued subscription. The switch to universal has thrown a lot of us off. I don't think anybody would disagree with side yard recycling being a good thing, but I would emphasize that it's good for those homeowners that are interested in the service, can accommodate the service, and for whom it makes sense pragmatically, economically, and environmentally. An all-or-nothing universal service required for participation would create different challenges for different homeowners. And I think of three types of homeowners. Those who own a home and rent, those who own a home as a second home and do not rent, and may not be there for much of the year, and those that own and live there as a primary residence. Some homes that currently have room for two trash cans inside their enclosure may not have room for a third, perhaps even a fourth, if we consider debris in addition to recycling. During the task force discussions, there was a concept presented by Cascade, by the trash hauler regarding, it was essentially like a three-strikes kind of thing. It was called something different. I'm sorry, I don't have that before me right now. But, it was, if you're in violation three times, you're excluded from the service. Then one has to ask the question, well, what happens with trash then, and recycling, and So, somewhat in conclusion, I'm concerned that with mandatory universal service, homeowners may be paying for a service that they neither want or need while losing the valued existing subscription service, which I believe to be very popular. I'm not sure that the universal approach would benefit all, or even some stakeholders. As in the case of Bend and Redmond, Sun River also doesn't allow backyard burning. I think the commission should consider allowing for subscription services as, using the same reasoning that would apply to both Bend and Redmond. I'll submit in written form prior to the deadline any additional...
Okay, that was Valentine's Day, in case anyone in the room didn't recognize February 14th. So...
Warning, warning.
Yes, it is Valentine's Day. So, thank you, Bill, for your testimony.
Question for Mr. Burke.
Yes, a question?
Is it, would there be a scenario where somebody would have a, you know, roll cart of recyclables that would be brought to the transfer station out there in 97? Or does that just feel like a long, long trip away?
Well, it's quite a distance, and it's not exactly environmentally sound to have more people on the road, more people burning fossil fuels, all of those sorts of things. Another option, about equidistant, maybe a little bit further from Sun River, would be not landfill. So, let's say...
So, you'd take them as about the same distance generally?
Yeah, roughly. So, let's say, even if I were to subscribe, I guess I wouldn't subscribe, enter a contract for universal, and I were renting my home, and I have a series of wayward renters that don't follow it, I'm kicked out of the subscription, where, what do I do with the trash, recyclables and yard debris? Yard debris, I could go out to Penn Hollow, and for a fee, I could dump it there, which is what I do anyway. So, you may be shifting a problem from one place to another place. And I guess that's part of why I say, one size does not fit all. Having a subscription opportunity, I think, can work a lot better for everybody. There are a couple things, if I could, that I really liked about the proposal. One is that $15 increase. That falls right in line with the survey. For those homeowners that wanted side yard, what would they be willing to pay for it? So, I think that price seems reasonable. I like the accommodation as proposed that would allow for trash cans, for us to maintain our own trash cans, so that we still fall within the Sun River requirements for building, so that you can't see trash cans from the road or from neighbor to neighbor.
Right. Thank you.
Could I ask a clarification question as well? Mr. Burke, you used the word mandatory at a certain point. And in our, in our staff memo that was prepared for us last week, they actually, there was distinctions between universal subscription and mandatory. Mandatory being, your local jurisdiction basically tells you, you will sign up for these services, and you will pay this much, and you don't have any choice in that. And I just wanted to clarify that you weren't, you weren't saying that...
I was using the term mandatory in a different kind of way than the official designation of mandatory service.
Got it.
I was speaking of it more in terms of you're in or you're out kind of thing, and one size will apply to all Sun River homeowners.
Okay, yeah. So, and then your subsequent comments made me think that you, that you got that, that you could basically decide to pass on the whole universal package, in which case, you would have to figure out what to do with your various streams of waste. But, that is, that is an option for people, that they can just say...
I agree, and thanks for...
I don't want it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Burke. Mr. Lewis, James Lewis?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. James Lewis, I'm the General Manager for the Sun River Owners Association. Last Friday, I submitted to you some correspondence via email, also to the county administrator, Nick Leelak. I have copies of that today that I can leave with you if you didn't get a chance to see that. But, I'm just going to briefly summarize these, what's in the letter. As you've heard, starting in probably mid-2020, concluding early 2021, we had a task force, a recycling task force. We looked at a multitude of recycling issues in Sun River. One of them was recycling depot. I'm not going to go into that today, because this is specifically on the side yard and the fee. But, as part of that, we had board members, we had owners, we had owners for and against our depot, for and against different issues related to recycling. We also had the participation of county staff, Tim Shimke, Chad Centola, thank you for your participation, and Irwin Swetnam from Cascade Disposal. So, it was a robust, there were a lot of meetings, robust conversation and discussion. So, with that, though, there was a report that came to our Board of Directors. Ultimately, our Board of Directors, when discussing side yard recycling, was in favor of beginning side yard recycling. It was their understanding that it was going to be on a subscription basis. But ultimately, as the staff proposed herein, a universal fee where everyone would pay regardless of whether or not they participated or used the recycling service, that was something that our board did not feel comfortable providing a stance on. Because, number one, it's not something, it's not a service that SROA provides. It's a private company, a private business. So, our board did not feel that it was within their purview to make a comment or to say, yes, all Sun River owners that get trash service should also pay for the recycling, whether they use it or not. Because, again, it's not something that SROA provided, you know, it's not our service. And it is a private business, a private entity, and they did not feel comfortable basically saying, this is how the private business should operate in Sun River. So, with that, there was one other question I'll address, and that was, you asked about, I think it was Commissioner Chang, maybe, asked last week about, can it be curbside? And I provided in the letter, there are a lot of logistics. Some of them, you heard, there are a multitude of renters, rental properties, 40% of the properties are rental properties, 40% of the properties are second homes. If you get collections in the middle of the week, it comes down to, and this is why trash is at the side of the house right now, who's going to take the cart out to the street? Who's going to bring it back? Narrow streets. There's just a lot of logistics. And then ultimately, it would take a vote of the owners. So, you know, that's something challenging as well. So, I just wanted to provide those comments on behalf of our Board of Directors. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, James, for the clarification. 40% rental, I mean, I can see where side yards really, you know, it makes perfect sense, because otherwise, the trash cans will be sitting out there, or they won't get out there, and then they'll be full. And yes, it adds a lot of issues. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. yes, it adds a lot of issues. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Gregory Bryant, if you'd like to speak now?
Greg Bryant from Deschutes, rural woods, and thank you for letting me talk to you about the testimony on the possibility of yard debris pickup. Now, the question I got, it, first question is, is this going to be a subscription, or is it going to be universal in Deschutes, rural woods? Or is that up to, up to debate? Because from my standpoint, it should probably be a subscription. And also, DRW is approximately 2,000 residences, and some, some of them are older people, or people that don't have access to pickup, and so this debris pickup would be a good thing, because they can't get, get it to landfill. Now, depends upon how many trees you have on a, on a lot, depends upon how easily this would be to work for, for the debris pickup. You have to remember that each one of these lots is about, almost an acre large. Like on my lot, I've got over 40 trees that are good sized. Sometimes you have a lot of needles, and also pine cones that you have to pick up, both during the spring and also at fall. And so from my standpoint, it'd be hard for me to justify doing, doing this for the whole 12 months, because, you know, you're talking about $120 versus it probably cost me maybe $40 at the max to do, you know, in the fall, and, and in the spring. But, you know, at a certain point in time, I might want this. And I was just wondering, and the next question was, what's the, if it is a subscription, what, how many do you have to have to make this a viable option? That's my question. And I'm sure that's a question you guys have too. Any questions?
Thank you very much for the testimony. That's exactly, the decision space is between that universal and subscription fee, and then we'll, we'll understand more about the total number of services and the, and the, yeah, how the fees would add up.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you so much.
But, you know, just what Waste Connections has proposed is universal.
Yeah, that's usually universal.
Yeah, I mean, that doesn't, again, that doesn't mean that the decision is made already, as Commissioner DeBon is pointing out, but the proposal from Waste Connections is for universal.
No, no, that universal means that everybody has to take, if, if, what, 50% of the people within an area say that they want it, then everybody else has to do it. Is that?
No, I, I mean, I think what's, I think what that means is, if you sign up for, for trash and recycling, then you also get, that all the services are in one bundle, and you either take it or leave it.
Okay, so who's making that decision? The commissioners? Once, once all this information is coming about, or is it going to the residences through some sort of vote or something?
I believe that, that Waste Connections is seeking approval for us, from us, you know, since they are franchisees, to implement this proposal.
Okay, so, okay, so, okay, so then, if you guys accept it, then that means you're forcing everybody in Deschutes, rural woods, and also the other areas to take this on. Unless, unless they don't want trash disposal.
Unless, yes.
Is that true?
I would love to ask, you know, Chad or Tim or Nick to just confirm. I, I believe that that is, you know, that the kind of, the way that this decision would work, that if we, if we support their proposal, then you would be, if you, then if you want service, you would be required to take the full bundle.
That is, that's correct.
Okay. Now, is, okay, another question I got is, is there a, if you don't want it, if you don't want it, is there another system to do that? So, maybe it won't be $10 a week, it would be, I mean, a month, it might be like $15 a month, but it depends upon if you want it or not.
The proposal with Cascade Disposal is for a subscription service, so it's a bundle service. If you elect to subscribe, you get all the service. If you elect to not subscribe, then you either haul your own waste or have somebody else take care of it for you.
Okay, so that is different than what we've got right now, because there's certain people that have, have wasted, have garbage taken away, and that's all they have to take away, and other ones have garbage and recycling.
It depends on which service zone you're in. Deschutes, rural woods is in the rural zone. So if you, if you subscribe to service right now in Deschutes, rural woods, you get waste and coal mingle collection. That's the package you pay for. If there's a neighbor of yours that is not doing coal mingle recycling, they've just not elected to participate in that, but they are paying for it.
They are paying for it?
Yes, they are.
Okay, I'll tell them that.
They don't know that.
Let them know.
Okay.
It is, it is a universal service in Deschutes, rural woods right now. Garbage and coal mingle.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Is this going to add glass there?
Yes, it will add glass and yard debris.
And yard debris too?
Yes.
And so, someone like Mr. Bryant, who doesn't, who thinks, you know, if he can use it in the, if he's just going to use it intermittently, can you like get the service and then drop it and go back and forth? Is that possible?
Well, if, if the board approves the universal service, his, the option is he pays for it all if he subscribes to it, and whether he elects to leave a can out there on a given week, that is his decision. So, it's not, it's not mandatory that he, I avoid using that term, it's not required that he put that yard debris can out every other week. If he doesn't have anything to leave out there, he doesn't have to bring the can out there.
Okay.
Could you picture scenarios where people are, well, if they sign up, universal service, and then they stop for a few months, and then they sign back up again? In which case, during those few months, they wouldn't need to take care of their trash and recycling some other way. But, I mean, is it, will, would Cascade Disposal allow for that, or would they, would they just say like, no, you can't go on and off and on and off like that?
I've had a few conversations with residents of Sun River about this, and I talked with Erwin Swetnam about it, and Cascade Disposal is very accommodating. Using someone in Sun River as an example, it would apply to anywhere in their service area. Somebody's going to be in, in, at their, their home in Sun River for two or three weeks, they can call and sign up for the service, and then cancel it when they leave. There was one woman I spoke with, her, her family shows up there for like one week at a time, and they just call Cascade when they're locking up the doors to the house and say, my can's full, can you come and get it? And they'll dispel her for that one pickup. So, I would expect that service would be available throughout their system.
Interesting.
Affirmative from Erwin there.
That's what I was wondering, if you really paid attention, and when you needed it. And then, of course, we have fire free in the spring, that's pretty significant, but of course you have to haul it to Knott or to Lapine.
Just for a little elaborate on the answer for you, Commissioner Chang, is there's no minimum period of time to sign up for service?
Okay. But if, but, but during the time that you are not signed up for universal service, you're not getting anything?
Correct.
Okay.
And I'll just point out that there was a really nice staff report that explained all of this in the board's packet last week. So, it's not posted for this week. So, if you'd like more of a description, it really does a nice job of explaining the differences between a mandatory service, a universal service, and a subscription service. So the definitions are in there, and then what's kind of provided where. So it's, it's a really nice memorandum. So, the January 24th board packet, and if anybody needs it, we're happy to provide it if you're not able to find it online.
Thank you, Nick, that was, that's great. It is a really good packet, so thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Edward Patera, please.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Thank you for holding this public hearing regarding residential recycling. My name is Ed Patera. My wife and I have owned a home at 25 Quayle Lane in Sun River for 10 years. The county is to be congratulated for considering expanding residential recycling and doing it in ways that meet the needs of the community served. For some, the collection of side yard wastes, excuse me, yard wastes, is a positive step for public safety by helping us remove combustible fuels from our yards. For others, home collection of recyclables will improve the quality of materials recycled and reduce or eliminate dependency on an overwhelmed, out-of-date, uncontrolled, unsafe drop-off depot at the Sun River Owners Association property on Sun Eagle Lane. In Sun River, it is important to adopt home recycling as a side yard pickup service in the same way trash pickup has been for years. As important as improving recycling services is managing growth. The popularity, growth, and inadequacies of the Sun River Recycling Depot are well documented in Sun River Owners Association records and publications. The county's solidway staff report cites, it is very popular and is woefully inadequate to handle the volumes of materials coming in. From my perspective, the growth of the Sun River Depot is not in harmony with the adjacent residential neighborhood, generates considerable noise, promotes unlimited private vehicle and truck traffic, and allows illegal dumping of household trash. Its current use is inconsistent with the county's 2002 site plan approval for the property. Operations exceed even a new staff interpretation, with which I do not agree, of the limitations the county placed on the property with that land decision. County code enforcement planning staff gave permission for this excess, in effect putting a county department in the position of directing additional violations of an approved site plan. It would be best to accommodate growth through open and normal land use amendment processes rather than ad hoc code enforcement interpretations. Additionally, quickly implementing side yard pickup should avoid the overuse situation the depot currently faces. In closing, we appreciate the county improving the environment and enhancing Deschutes County's green image through actions such as expanding residential recycling. Thank you for your time.
Oh my gosh, you have six seconds to go. Very, very impressive. Thank you so much, Edward. Any questions?
Do you want to weigh in on the subscription versus universal question?
No, because I want to make progress. We really need progress. Yes, I'd weigh in in this sense. There's a lot of people that come to Sun River vacationing. They come from areas where they're used to home recycling. When we create a situation that's out of their normal experience, we create problems. If we can mimic what they see at their normal home, I think we'll have much more success in getting higher rates of recycling and, quite frankly, avoiding nuisances. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony, Edward. Mark McConnell, please?
I'm going to use this chair.
Now, did anyone else want to give testimony? Just so you can fill out the form if you do.
Mark McConnell, I live in Sun River. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. I am in full support of the proposal. Recycling in Sun River has been problematic for quite some time. There have been many attempts to fix it. The problems stem from a depot which is open to the public all hours of the day, is unmonitored, and is not equipped or managed for the volume of dumping that occurs. As long as any recycling depot is operated in that way, it will always be a hot mess, as described by the homeowners association. Most people that I talk to in Sun River are upset about the abuse of the center. They're concerned that it has become a dump site, and that it is so contaminated that it may end up in the landfill. Efforts to find out how much is actually recycled have been unsuccessful, and it appears that either the data does not exist, or it will not be shared. The proposal before you will change the way most homes in Sun River recycle, and will bring the process up to state standards. Home-based recycling is what most Oregonian households are already accustomed to. With once-a-week, universal side yard recycling service, which mimics how our trash is picked up, Sun River homeowners and rental companies will have the opportunity to collect recyclables in a bin of their choice. This will allow them to easily meet the Sun River code for trash enclosures. The hauler can track what each home is recycling as it is transferred to the truck. The onus will fall on the hauler to keep the stream clean and profitable, and assure that our recycling actually makes a difference. And I might add on the universal versus, versus the subscription service, I, I think, I think the point came out quite clearly, that universal service can be started and stopped as a homeowner needs. There are a lot of homes in Sun River, a lot of people I know that are gone for the winter, or they're here for the winter, gone for the summer. They come and go, they're two months here, two months there, three months here. They can, they can just turn it on and off with, with ease. The original proposal that was surveyed was that you were going to have to have a subscription service that was going to require a six-month commitment, and people really balked at that, and I don't blame them for that. So, I think the universal service is really probably more economical in the long run for most people that have that concern about whether they have service or not. Please vote in favor of the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you for coming today and testifying. Any other questions? No. Thank you, Mark. Clark Pedersen, please?
My name is Clark Peterson. I live at 6 Trophy Lane in Sun River. I also am a member of the board of directors of the Sun River Owners Association, and I also was on the recycling task force, which met over a five-month period in 12 different meetings and countless hours as we looked at recycling in the depot and side yard and, and all those issues regarding recycling. I'm also a full-time resident and a Deschutes County registered voter. I'm an advocate of recycling and, and recycle quite thoroughly in my home, taking, making use of the depot in Sun River. I'm here to ask you to support the subscription option and not the universal option. And I'm speaking as a, as an homeowner, not a member of the board, in my beliefs. In answer to a little bit of the question last meeting about would someday, Sun River allow curbside recycling, as our general manager, James, has pointed out, I don't, do not believe that's likely. Our streets are narrow, there are no sidewalks, there are no curbs. The owners have a desire for a very natural setting, would be very reluctant to have cans at the street for one day, much less often people leaving them for two or three days. So I do not see a vote to change that passing. And also, it's very important to remember that only about 20, 22% of our residents are full-time residents that are here most of the year round. So, it's only those portions that will be present to move containers to the street and back. As mentioned, 40% of our homes are second homes that they do not rent, and some of those owners are only here a couple times a year, a couple weeks a year, and the rest of the time, the home sits empty. So they're often used very infrequently. And even the 33 or so percent of our homes that are second homes that also rented out through one of the management companies or through VBRO and Airbnb, renters cannot be relied upon to move trash cans. And even the management companies that handle the rentals, if they're managing 300 homes, I don't see them moving trash cans out in the morning and back at night for 300 homes in their service territory. So, curbside is not really an option. The universal option that is being proposed is, is not mandated by the state for rural, unincorporated areas. So if we decide, if you decide to support this option, it's a decision that you are imposing and not the state is imposing. And I say imposing, and I look at it as mandatory, if you want your garbage picked up, we must, you must pay for and have the curbside recycling whether you use it or not. Where many of our owners are currently paying for garbage and are more than comfortable taking their recycling to the depot. So we would now be imposing on them that charge, whether they choose to use the depot or not. I think the universal option will also involve a considerable waste of resources. It was mentioned a bit last meeting, that trucks and employees will be walking up to side yards to look to see if there is recycling in a can, only to find out that the house was empty that week and there is no recycling. They're currently doing that for garbage. Some homeowners that might be coming, you know, one week, a weekend, or two weekends a month, just let the garbage, you know, pay, pay for the service all month long. And so, employees are walking up and finding there's nothing there to pick up. Now, we'll be doing that twice, because it's a separate truck that picks up recycling from that, that picks up trash. Many owners currently use the recycling depot to handle the recycling, and I don't believe they should be mandated that they also pay for side yard if they want their garbage picked up. And as mentioned earlier too, many side yard enclosures can only handle two containers, and if an owner feels they need two trash containers, they won't be able to use a recycling container. A lot of the people that are renting, they often generate a lot of garbage in their short-term rental, because they're often doing a lot of eating out and, and things. And so often, two trash cans are necessary during times that your homes are rented. So I ask you that you please allow property owners the freedom of choice to use the recycling depot or subscribe to the convenience of side yard pickup by approving a subscription service for Sun River. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Clark. Thank you. Any questions?
So, a question for you. So, would there be a recycling depot if there were, for a subscription service? You're saying they would complement each other? Because the universal service would not have a. Because the universal service would not have a depot.
No, there is a recycling depot in Sun River. The land provided by the Owners Association and the county helping pay Cascade for the servicing of it, that is currently there, and some homeowners would continue to use that if you do.
Is it going to stay, though? Or is it going to go away? I guess that's maybe James.
We don't know what will happen.
You're on the board, right? Yeah.
I think if you do the mandated, there's a possibility it might increase the chances that it goes away. But also, if you have one weekly can, it's a 32-gallon can, and you have a lot of cardboard that week, either you're going to be storing, get to try to parcel it out week to week, or you're going to take it to the recycling depot in order to dispose of it. And then there was a mention.
Is there not, is there clarity if the recycling depot is going to stay or go?
There is no clarity. That's a year-by-year decision by the Owners Association.
It's kind of up in the air.
But there's no intent at this point in time to close the depot.
Yeah, and if we could unpack that just a little bit more, I would love to have Chad maybe answer a question, which is, my understanding is that currently the county contributes funds to the operation of the depot, and part of the deal there, or part of the agreement, is that the depot is available for people beyond Sun River.
Correct.
So, you know, I don't think, you know, if you implement, if you implement side yard collection in Sun River, as long as you're, as long as we are contributing to the depot, it needs to be there to provide service to people who live outside of Sun River. Is that, is that the right way to look at that?
On the county, they would only pay the money for servicing the depot if it was open to the public in areas beyond Sun River. If Sun River Owners Association ever decided, no, we want to close depot, the county would cut off the funding, and we would have to pay for the servicing of the depot ourselves.
And at which point you could decide you wanted to close the depot, but we would be trying to figure out how to provide that kind of central collection point somewhere in that part of South County.
Also, too, you won't have recycling pickup in the South County for a while because Republic has no history of providing that, and they don't intend to provide it in the near future. It's something that's going to be a little further down the road they're going to be arranging.
Is that kind of inaccurate? Did we, did we just kind of lay out an accurate, complete picture, Chad?
Yeah, one part of the funding that was not presented was every ratepayer in Waste Cascade's disposal area helps pay for that service. Cascade Disposal collects part of their operating fees from every subscriber, and then the county contributes $45,000 a year to assist in the servicing of that. And one statement, if the Sun River recycling depot were to close to the public or go away completely, the county would not pursue finding another location. Our Southwest transportation fulfills our obligation for service in that area.
It's also understanding that part of the $45,000 to contribute to the open depot is coming from landfill funds, too, since you're offsetting volume at the landfill. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Clark. Okay, Ray Miao.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having this public hearing. And the county administrator and the county council, thank you also. My name is Ray Miao. I live at 20683 Pine Vista Drive, Woodside Ranch. I am the president of the Woodside Ranch Homeowners Association. I'm also the chair of the Woodside Ranch Fire Safety Committee, and I'm a, I guess I'm still vice president of the Rural Fire Protection District Number Two. Oh, yeah, okay, I'm on the library board, too, so.
Well, thanks for taking time to come see us, yeah.
Yeah, don't forget the library.
In my spare time, I do what you guys do. But here, today, I want to speak to you as an individual. Our biggest concern, or the greatest danger to life and property, is wildfire. Realizing that, since about 2004, 2005, we have been having an annual fire-free cleanup to create defensible space. You know what defensible space is, so I won't go into it. We thought educating people, getting to change the behavior, doing the cleanup every year to remove fire fuels. Over the years, we probably have less and less fuels. Well, apparently Mother Nature and I don't speak the same language. We've gone from about 3,000 cubic yards to over 5,000 cubic yards every year. The problem has been, we do it in a one-week period. People clean up for about two months beforehand, bring it out to the curbside, we hire a contractor. One reason we can do the contractor is because of the grants we receive from you guys, and we thank you from the bottoms of our heart for that. Because if you didn't give the financial support that you give, we couldn't afford to do this. Increasing amounts of fuel means increasing costs. We're not seeing an upper limit to how much fuel we're going to have to bring out. People are starting to do what we hope they would do, is create all of the entirety of Woodside Ranch to be the defensible zone for the entire south side of the county. When the fire comes, and it will, from the Deschutes National Forest, it'll drop to the ground, firefighters will be able to protect home and property, much safer for us and for them. Our concern has been, we are going to overload, not landfill. At some point in time, we won't be able to afford it, you won't be able to afford it, the landfill won't be able to afford it. If we had yard debris cleanup, we've been hoping for this for years, people could eliminate their fire debris, mainly pine needles, pine cones, shrubs, small limbs, throughout the year. We know the best time to get rid of the shrubs and limbs is when it's cold weather, but fire-free occurs when it's warm weather. If we spread everything out over a 12-month period, we don't overburden the landfill, we reduce the cost to everybody, and we accomplish what we want to do, which is keep the Deschutes County fire safe. That's the goal that we have, and that's why I'm here to testify and say, whether you do subscription or universal, do it. $10 is nothing compared to the costs that people will suffer when the fire comes through. They lose their house, they lose all their memories, everything they have will be gone. Plus, our recovery from the wildfire is going to cost us so much more than we can possibly afford. For $10 a month, no matter how you place it on them, people are going to go for it. And I will tell you this, whatever you decide, subscription, universal, the homeowners association, and I'm sure the Rural Fire Board, will be able to present this to the general public because it saves lives and it saves their property. So just do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray, for your testimony. As we were discussing earlier, we're up to almost 61 firewise communities in our county. It's been an amazing increase, so thankful for all the things that you do. And we actually found out, we expanded, you know, not landfill, you know, fire-free days two years ago, and found out last year, they said, well, this is costing almost half a million dollars. And I said, what's one fire going to cost in Deschutes County? A half a million is going to be nothing. We've got to do that. And according to, I think, the presentation that Chad gave us, it takes the county about 10 months to clean up all that. Isn't that what you said to Chad? It was like a huge amount of time because of all that's coming in with fire-free days. So I get what you're saying, you know, spread it out, but it sounds like we just, you know, we have, yeah, the cleanup doesn't get smaller. It's, you know, it's a huge, it's a huge issue, but thank you to the community, thank you to those almost 61 fire-free communities that have joined. Deschutes County's, I believe, will be almost number four in the nation, hopefully soon. So, yeah, it's really appreciated, all the little things that people can do to make their house safe, personal responsibility.
I'm trying to keep the entire community, including the city of Bend.
Yes.
I'd be happy to answer any of the questions.
I wanted to say a few things and ask a question. First off, Ray, thank you very much for basically posing the question, how much can we dispose of at the landfill? Because whether it all comes in, you know, a concentrated dose during fire-free weeks or it comes over the course of the year, we're already hearing from Chad that the amount of volume, the volume material we're taking in on an annual basis right now, it takes us almost the entire year to, you know, to make go away. And we're not necessarily, you know, in my opinion, not making it go away, go away in my favorite, you know, potential pathway is, you know, some of it gets ground up and then just kind of spread over layers as layers of trash are going into the landfill. It, you know, abates dust and does things like that. But, you know, it'd be great to see much more of that material being composted or going to, you know, other recycling-type purposes. And meanwhile, we have the wildfire omnibus bill that was passed by the legislature just last year that is going to be requiring, yeah, residents in high wildfire-risk areas to do defensible space on their property. So right now, you know, who knows, maybe we've got 30, 50, 70% of our residents, you know, doing defensible space on their properties. Pretty soon, it's going to be 100%, and that will just drive up the volume of material even more. So we really need to think about kind of what our, what our holding and kind of cycling capacity is. And that does, that does kind of come back to the question of, you know, how, what's the best means for landowners to get their stuff away from their house? So my question to you actually was, the idea that, you know, once a year, you would be able to just pile material at your curb, is, you know, it's potentially an answer to, you know, the concern that Greg Bryan was posing, was like, well, I only want to, I only want to actively dispose of material like for a few months of the year, as opposed to, you know, paying for yard debris, yard debris collection bin year-round. But with your system that where, you know, people put the material out at the curb, if you could do that a couple of times a year, you know, maybe, you know, four weeks a year instead of just one week a year, do you think that would address the demand, you know, the appetite in your community for getting rid of fuel? Or is it really better to just have 52 weeks of the year, you know, you can, you can do, or really every other week probably?
Good question. Excellent questions. It's a matter of logistics, but realizing what the fuel is, in our area, it's pine needles, pine cones, deciduous tree leaves, and they come down pretty much all year round, and they're there. If we remove those and remove some of the lower-lying limbs throughout the year, my feeling is, people would do it. One of the complaints we have is, we only give them a month to bring out all their debris. And bringing debris from the house out to the street side, for a lot of people, is, has become impossible because of their age. I mean, we have one-and-a-half to two-and-a-half acre lots. That's a long way to the street side. If they could put it in their yard debris can, it's so much easier to haul a can down to your street side biweekly and get rid of it that way. That's the type of debris that can be removed year-round, at your leisure, when you feel like, when it's not snowing on you, you get rid of this stuff, right? The other advantage of doing it year-round is, then we could actually focus, maybe once or twice, or like you're saying, maybe even four times a year, to thin out the trees themselves, which are becoming the major danger now. Over 20 years, people have been removing the ground fuels, right? They know what to do. We've changed their behavior. They do it automatically. But nobody is thinning out the trees, and the trees are getting, they're thick growths, they're getting bigger, and the pine trees will just keep growing. I see in the future, that's our major danger. When the embers fly a mile through the air, land on the trees themselves because they're so dense, the embers won't be hitting the ground. They're creating an umbrella over the ground. The embers will sit on the trees, drought continues, we're going to have, I mean, we're going to have firestorms just from the embers. We haven't been able to thin out the trees because we've put all our money and effort into clearing the ground fuels. We just cannot afford the time and the effort to thin trees. State Farm NFPA has initiated, what they're saying is, an every-year grant of $25,000 to about $150,000 per homeowners association to do interest, new ideas to decrease wildfire. We would love to be able to do that. If the homeowners would take care of everything else, defensible space on the ground year-round, we would be able then to use our very limited manpower and resources to actually thinning out those trees that should be removed, which present our greatest danger. There are steps we have to take. We have to look to the future, what's happening, what's happening in growth, and say, how do we address these now before the fire, the conflagration starts? So I think year-round cleanup is the way to go.
And the annual event, too.
And an annual event.
Okay.
The annual event, because of the way trees have to be taken out, cold weather presents a little problem. But I think if we focus on it, we'll be able to figure out a way to logistically and managerially and financially handle that problem. The other thing that would be interesting is, if we remove all of the ground debris in our stuff, pine needles, pine cones, that can't be chipped, they have to be thrown into the landfill. If we can then go out and take out the limbs, anything, small trunks that can be chipped, you can resell it. You don't have to throw it back into the landfill. There's a market for pine, for bark mulch, for tree mulch. Sell it over into the valley, they'll pay you for it. We can get some revenue out of the fire fuels that we're trying to get rid of. Other people look at it as landscaping material. There's all these other alternatives where we can actually subsidize some of the costs and maybe even build some small businesses here.
Thank you for those comments, Ray. I do have a question for you, Chad. What is the size of the trash can that you would put your yard waste, your trees into?
Those would be 96-gallon carts.
96? And you get those every, every two weeks, then?
Yes.
Gosh.
Alternate week. It's a 64-gallon cart for the co-mingle recycling.
Okay.
And Chad, while we've got you up there, I tried to characterize sort of the volume of material that's coming into the landfill and how we're trying to get rid of it. Is that, do you want to clarify anything?
Yeah, we had such a terrible audio at the, for the retreat, I wasn't sure if you were hearing what I was saying. So it takes us about six to eight months to process the fire-free yard debris. And on top of that, we get yard debris from our rural transfer stations year-round, and what we do is use it for alternate daily cover on the landfill. So it takes about six or eight months. If we look at the pile that comes from fire-free, it takes that amount of time to use it up. And as the volumes increase, we're going to be getting more material than we can safely use up. There's risks associated with keeping a lot of it in stock at the landfill. We've, over the years, had fires occasionally from spontaneous combustion, and we may or may not lose that opportunity for using it as cover with these new landfill methane emission rules that the state of Oregon has passed recently. We're still kind of evaluating how that's going to impact us. So the yard debris that comes to the landfill, not to recycling, ultimately will be disposed of in the landfill.
So you said, I was incorrect when I said 10 months.
Yeah, I think I said six to eight months.
Okay, well, I just, all I remember is it was a long period of time, so that's still significant if you were talking everything, well, we ended up, what, in like June 5th this last year, I think? So that meant for months then, we were, you were working on getting rid of it.
Correct. And on top of that, I said, year-round, we're getting material coming in from the transfer stations as well.
I know, we looked into having like the firemen at Cloverdale practice at the pile at Fright Year Road. at Frye Year Road where I'm by, and then last year, they said, oh, no, no, thank you, we don't need to practice. So, yeah, I'm like, darn it. I thought, well, we could-
Not entirely convinced that's, that's an optimal solution.
I know. And then, of course, DEQ probably wouldn't like it, so.
And as, and as Senate Bill 762, the wild, the omnibus wildfire bill kicks in, the scale of defensible space work in our community is really going to increase. And, I mean, so just, just understanding the storage and disposal constraints we have around the current volume of material, I'm very concerned about.
We have considered basically directly burying yard debris coming in from fire free, just because we were getting so much material now. We're pretty much out of cusp. We're saving material for using for alternate daily cover. Does make a lot of sense because we get so much in. And we were giving that some serious consideration this last year, but we opted not to do that.
Right.
So, Chad, like what we're hearing today, you know, where we have fire free, we had three weeks at NOD, and then we had the three weeks at, you know, the outline transfer stations. Maybe should we try and move NOD a bit earlier? I mean, is that a possibility? And then give you a couple of weeks in between? I mean, would that even help as a break?
Yeah, you know, historically, we used to do fire free in April, and the difficulty was South County-
Snow?
-had snow on the ground, so we were getting complaints from down there that it just wasn't the best time to do it. So, we shifted it to May. You know, who knows with weather pattern these days, maybe we take a look at shifting it back earlier in the year. But that was the challenge, was just the snow conditions in the South County to participate with us.
But I thank you again for making it so expanded and then splitting it up, because I do feel like it's so important for our community.
He can get kudos for that.
Yes, Tim, thank you so very much. Thanks for coming today. Yeah, it was, it made a difference, truly, it made a difference, and I thank you for that work.
And as we were talking about, as we were just talking about with Ray, we're probably going to have to keep doing everything we've been doing in terms of offering opportunities for disposal and do more. So, you know, the conversation we're having today is great. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the room then that wanted to give testimony? Thank you, Ray. Stephanie, or is there anyone on Zoom that we can recognize? No hands raised? And what about any telephone numbers?
No phone numbers.
And no phone numbers? Okay. And you know, you heard that you can still submit written comments to us by Valentine's Day. What was it, was it 2:00 in the afternoon?
Midnight.
Midnight? Oh, my gosh. Okay. So, midnight on Valentine's Day, you can still submit comments. You know, it is, as we all are very aware, it's very important what we do, and how do we make it the best for our citizens and the most impactful for the safety?
Can I ask, Chad, one more question that kind of, you know, helps me get at this, this subscription versus universal question? So, I believe what we heard from some of the franchisees is, when, when you make a service universal, it allows them to plan, kind of, they, they can expect a certain scale and volume of work. And that's very helpful for them to make, to then make that work, delivering those services as efficient as possible. While with a subscription type setup, it's, it's a, you know, they're not sure how many people are going to subscribe, and it's quite possible that the number of people who subscribe makes it, you know, that you just don't get the volume efficiency of having the universal sign up. And, but, you know, so I, I feel like I heard that basic argument, but I don't, could you, like, are you able to unpack that a little bit more? Like, you know, like how much, how many subscribers does it take to make delivery of a service efficient? And, and, you know, how many, how many makes it like, so that, I mean, at what point, at what point, when, if we were to turn around and say, not going to go with the universal proposal, but go with, with subscription, like, how much more would they have to potentially charge to the people who do subscribe to kind of create the, you know, volume of work and predictability around that, that, you know, to provide the service for how much it costs?
You know, the discussions on the subscription service that were part of the original proposal when we were looking at the, providing financial assistance for the recycling center in Sun River was, part of my involvement, I'm a little bit of a latecomer to it, I know what they looked at, it's difficult to forecast participation rate. And I believe Cascade Disposal took a look at, at rates at about, at 800 customers participating in the subscription service, and then 1,000, and then something, some number larger than that. So, they take a look at what the cost of providing that service is, plus the numbers of a piece of equipment and employees they need to have, and build those into those various forecasts. And I, because I was involved early on, I don't have those answers. I don't know whether Tim can answer anything off the top of his head on that. But typically, subscription service, you get better participation because if, maybe it's an exercise in human psychology, but because you're, excuse you, with universal service, because you're paying for it, you're going to be more inclined to participate in recycling. If you don't have to pay for it and just have a trash can, well, maybe you wouldn't necessarily recycle quite as much. I don't want to cast that judgment on, on people, but I think, you know, between human behavior and, and, you know, financial impacts, it's, it's, it's an interesting exercise. But Cascade Disposal case, you know, they tried to run numbers based on their experience, on what they anticipate would be the participation rate. And I'm not sure what those breakpoints are, but if, any, either of you, Tim, if you want to share something? Sorry to pull you in. Glad you're here.
All right.
He misses us, I'm sure.
Welcome.
Senior advisor to the department.
He is on the clock, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, make him work for his money.
Oh, boy. So, when, when, when we, and I say we, I mean, the county in Cascade, when, when we thought that a new depot in Sun River was going to be the preferred option, although we had heard side yard service was also very attractive down there, we initially, Cascade initially made a proposal that said, okay, here's what we're going to do on the new depot, here's what we're going to do on the, on the side yard collection side. And on the side yard collection side, they said, if we assume 800 subscribers, here's the fee, basically, one truck and two drivers, two personnel is what would be required to provide service to 800. Same amount of trucks and drivers for like 1,000 to 1,100. But once you exceeded 1,100, you needed to add a second truck and two more personnel, and so the cost went back up to about where it is now. $14 a month will either cover the cost of 800 subscribers or 2,500 people on a universal approach. So, that's kind of the way it fell out. I think if you said, we want to go subscription, then we would probably leave the rate, $14, the same. And, you know, I guess what it come down to was, the objective in our mind, since the depot did not pass and is not going to get built anytime soon, was to do everything we could to minimize the use of that depot. It's overrun. And so, we felt that subscription was not going to achieve that goal, where universal might. That's why we went universal, okay? On the yard debris in the rural subdivision question, it was kind of the same thing. We could offer that subscription. We understand the popularity of that. We understand, it's nice not to tell people, you're going to pay for this extra service whether you use it or not on a universal approach. But if the objective is to minimize the loss of property and potential life in a wildfire, we felt that the subscription approach was not going to be the most effective way to try and reach that goal. And so, we went with the universal approach. That was our basic understanding, or at least our rationale for what we proposed.
Thank you, Tim.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah. Thank you.
Yes, definitely. Any other questions?
So, we're in a policymaking body as a board of commissioners and a franchise holder. If we, if we do a decision on subscription and we're changing the whole financials, is there a way to kind of back out of this as the operator? Or, you know, I'm just trying to kind of thinking of the business case of the relationship there. You know, I mean, there's, there's profit built in already to the system as a franchise operator, so it's kind of the dance about how do we get to this next level of service? And I'm just throwing out ideas here, we can-
I think, I think the franchise collectors will provide whatever service the local government decides that they should provide. You know, they'll just come up with a fair price and, and, you know, if that's what you want, we'll provide it, here's what it's going to cost. I think that's the franchise's perspective, you know? They're certainly not going to seriously oppose any level of service that you guys want to put in there. It's just that, you know, different levels of service cost different dollar amounts. And so, as long as everybody's understanding of the cost for whatever level of service you put in there, then they're happy to provide it.
So, yeah, an effective goal and the level of service to get to that goal, and the numbers are going to fall out of that, basically.
And I should also point out, when Cascade quoted $14 a month, that was not a quote of the cost to provide the service, okay? They looked at, here's some additional cost if we add this service, and combine, combination of all our other costs and our revenues, and here's a rate that we can charge for this new service that keeps us in the black, but below the profit margin. Okay? So, they're, they try to operate between 9 and 12%. I think their estimate at this point is that universal approach in Sun River at $14 puts them below the 9% mark. They're at 8, something like that. And they're willing to live with that until the program gets rolled out, and we have years worth of experience, and then the rate will probably adjust to whatever, you know, whatever level it needs to. Right now, they're, they're making an estimate, and they're coming in low, and we'll see how it falls out, if you guys choose to go that way. That's, I think, answers, you made a point earlier, Phil, about, it seems like $14 is cheap. And it is. It's a subsidized rate. Basically, they're giving up profits to provide a lower rate.
Thank you.
Except when people are looking at inflation on all sides of their life at this moment. You know, every time you go to put gas in your vehicle, you go in to buy food if it is on the shelf. So, I think people are, I appreciate that they're, it's putting them down at 8%, but I think people are very sensitive to price increases at this moment.
Understood.
It's what, $168 more a year? But then again, maybe it does, you know, we can do better cleanup with it. So, that's, that's the other side of it. Any other questions? So, Chad, anything you want to close with?
We'll see you on February 28th, I guess.
February 28th. Okay.
Our target date for the deliberations, yes.
Okay, great.
And Chair Derrill, just a reminder, the written record is open until Valentine's Day, February 14th at midnight. And where to send the comments via email to your email address-
My email address.
Which-
Chad.Centola, C-E-N-T-O-L-A, at deschutes.org. Or they can call me. I've had a couple residents call me.
Okay. And all those, all those comments then will be brought into our record, and we'll get that after the 14th.
Correct.
Oh, there's a question in the back of the room?
So, the letters that we have not seen or heard, or comments that we have not seen or heard, how do we access those prior to the 14th of February?
A good question. So, generally, what the department will do is, you'll compile all of those, and then we'll post those in the board's packet online. Now, if there's a mechanism that you want to be able to provide those publicly, there may be an opportunity to do that, like on, on your website, to include, for example, last week's memorandum, today's meeting notification, and then public comments that are being submitted. Those are some different options we can explore, if that's helpful.
I think it's important because if you want to make a comment on the 14th, but you want to see what's been said already, we need to have that available sooner, so.
It was on my agenda to have a conversation with you about that tomorrow at our department head up.
There you go.
Okay.
I'm sorry. So, we'll talk about that, but just, you know, the realistic is, comments that come in the last day, Chad may not be able to get those posted, of course, within a few hours before the record closes. So, likely, you know, the last submittals would be posted maybe the Friday before, something like that. So, we'll do the best we can.
And-
The last word.
Okay.
Yeah, we do.
Yes.
And our board, our board packet is usually available online days before, you know, some number of days before the actual meeting. So, so, I mean, you could, you could just, you could just look at, I mean, with, with what we've, our existing process in place, before Chad decides whether he's going to do additional, kind of like a public engagement opportunities, just with our existing system, you should be able to see the comments that came in up to like three or four or five days before the meeting in the, in the standard board packet.
Well, because of the dates, I think that we really are going to have to post those for you. We had our packet last Monday, and there were letters, there was information in there that you're going to want to review. But anything that's, you know, come in, it's going to be, need to be in somehow, Chad. We're going to have to really work on that, because then we're not having our meeting till the end of the month. And so, that means, that would not be available till the 24th of February, and that doesn't help anybody at all. So, we really will have to, hopefully, maybe the week before the 14th.
I'll work with Nick on engineering on that. That'll work. Thank you.
We have a great principal planner in the back of the room that's very good about posting comments, that can help us out if he needs to.
Yes, we are so lucky. Thank you so much.
Thanks very much.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, thank you for coming. We now have the Caldera Springs Resort Expansion on our agenda.
Nice development agreement?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis, how are you? Very nice plug there, Mr. LeLa.
You're welcome.
Good afternoon, commissioners. For the record, Anthony Regini, Community Development Department. The item before you is the Caldera Springs Improvement Agreement. And Nick prompted me a little bit to provide maybe a little bit of background on the purpose of improvement agreements and how do we get there, what the purpose is. So, I'll do that a little bit before we talk specifically about Caldera Springs. So, when a developer comes in and they, they pursue a tentative plat for a subdivision, there are two require, two ways to sort of get to the final plat or mylar before they can record. Developer has an option to either build all of the utilities and roads in advance of the final plat being recorded, or they can enter an improvement agreement. And so, this is a way that we, the county, ensure that the improvements are actually constructed, again, either prior to final plat, or ensure that they will be constructed in case the developer defaults for some reason. So, out of Title 17, we have a provision, and I noted in my memo, where the road department will review the cost estimate for roads and utilities. And then, the provision in our Title 17 requires that the security, in this case, a bond, is 120% of that estimate. So, Cody Smith, that the road department will review the cost estimate. If there are any questions, he'll go back and forth with the developer to sort of narrow down what the cost estimate should be. And then, we come up with 120% of that cost estimate. And then, the applicant then submits a security, in this case, again, a bond, for 120% of that amount. And so, along with the bond is the actual language of the improvement agreement, which lays out what the developer was responsible for, the timing, the fact that there's a warranty bond, so after the improvements are constructed, there's a secondary bond that must be submitted to cover warranty for a year, to ensure that it was constructed to our specifications and there are no defects. And so, there'll actually be a second piece of this improvement agreement, which is after a year, then they come in with a warrant, or after it's constructed, then there's a warranty bond period of a year. So, I'll be working closely with the clerk's office to ensure that the bonds are in our safe, again, in case there is a need for the county to call in the bond and complete the work. So, that's basically what an improvement agreement does. It's just a, it's an agreement between the county and the developer to ensure, in this case, roads and utilities are constructed to our specifications. Are there any questions from the commissioners about that generally?
No, thank you for that background.
I understand the concept. I'm interested in just, at the very beginning of this, you know, so I'm thinking, back in the day, if I had, you know, 80 acre farm and I wanted to, you know, make a little neighborhood, before land use in Oregon, but, you know, you'd just go in and- neighborhood, before land use in Oregon, but, you know, you'd just go in and somebody'd make the Mylar and say, okay, these are four properties instead of two, or instead of one now. But my point is, what, what gets us to this point of the required utilities, a development agreement? So this is, you know, the very beginning of this process, I'm trying to understand what we're doing.
Sure. And so the, you know, if you want to sort of go back, I'll sort of answer it in two ways. The earlier subdivisions, there was no opportunity for an improvement agreement. You had to construct the roads and utilities. And so now, when developers come to us, they generally have an idea already whether or not they want to go forward with an improvement agreement or not. And so they already, in Caldera's case, they knew that they wanted to get the Mylar recorded. And the importance of the Mylar recording is now they begin, they can begin to sell lots. So it begins that sort of financial cycle of selling lots, which then pays for the remainder of the development.
Yeah, so maybe that's what I'm thinking. So as soon as the Mylar is recorded, those are separate individual lots that can be sold to another party. So that's the reason you want to make sure that this is guaranteed, that there will be the.
Absolutely.
Up to those specs. That's what I was wondering. Thank you.
And again, for the older subdivisions, this option was not available. So developers, you know, for example, you think of Deschutes, River Woods, or other older subdivisions, they had to come in and construct everything upfront before we would ever sign off on the Mylar. So like I say, the incentive here is they want to sell the lots, but we take in a bond, which they pay an interest on at 120% of the estimate. So it's, it's not costing them nothing at this point.
Anthony, so when did this go into effect, this change?
The change to allow improvement agreements?
Yes.
That I don't know. I'd have to look at the.
I mean, like Eagle Crest went in earlier than this, is that correct? Or maybe, what about the second phase?
I'd have to look back on the ordinance in Title 17 when we put in improvement agreement. I know it hasn't always been there. So if you look at, you know, our first subdivision partition ordinance was adopted in 1977, the improvement agreement wasn't in there. But I don't know between then and now when we county decided to put that in.
Well, I mean, it seems like it would be helpful.
Yeah, developers love it.
It helps the developer, but, and it also protects the people that are buying those lots.
Absolutely. And it also protects the county. You know, we have an expectation as a county that they will construct these roads and utilities to our standards. So that 120% of the bond helps to ensure that we get what we want out of it, and the developer can then, again, begin that financial cycle of selling lots to pay incrementally for the development of the subdivision.
And usually, the standards of the county is just a road standard, but this is a developed area with water and sewer also.
Right. And so, you know, in this case, it's a private road standards, and then the utilities, because they're hooking into Sun River environmental for both water and sewer, that's all included in part of the cost estimate.
Great.
Any other general questions about improvement agreements? Nope. Okay. So this particular improvement agreement, again, covers, as I mentioned in my memo, covers two different subdivision Caldera. One is a 70-lot subdivision for residential units, and the other is a 16-lot overnight lodging unit subdivision. Each overnight lodging unit lot will actually contain two units apiece, so it's 32 total overnight lodging units. The adamant with legal counsel has reviewed the improvement agreement, and again, Cody at the road department has reviewed the cost estimate, and the total amount of the bond for the 120% is just short of $8.4 million. I will note, too, you can tell when a developer is anxious to get going because Caldera has already submitted two more subdivision applications for the expansion of Caldera. So they're raring to go.
Great.
Well, yeah, so this is a, it looks like it's a complete package. It was reviewed by legal. The last little memo from January 20th in the packet, that's the one that really puts it in perspective. It's got the little map associated with it and talks about a seven, yeah, $7 million kind of cost plus 120% number, 8.4. So that really kind of puts the whole thing in perspective. With that, I'll make a motion supporting document, you know, move board signature of document number 2022-141, the improvement agreement of Phase A of Caldera Springs.
I do have a question. Actually, the signatures were from 2021, but it has a 22-year. So it has you as the chair on this document, but we're staying with that?
We've corrected that.
We've corrected it?
Yeah.
Okay, just, I mean, I was just wondering.
Way to start it last year.
Yeah, Dave caught that, and I sent the revised signature page to Sharon. So Sharon.
Has it?
Your signature page will have the correct one.
Okay, so you made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes? Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you so much, Anthony. And thank you for working for Deschutes County.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Much easier now that Nick's not.
Oh. And then if you get called by Solid Ways for some help with the report, you'll go, Nick sent them your way.
Yeah, I did. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, look. Looks like Holly Harris is with us now. Thank you, Holly.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for having me. Holly Harris, Program Manager with Behavioral Health, oversee crisis services. And I am here today to request consideration of converting one limited-duration position to a regular position for the stabilization center. As you all remember, back in July, I came before you and requested that 17 limited-duration positions be converted to regular, primarily for the enhanced ability to recruit and retain folks in these positions, not necessarily tied to funding of these positions, just the status of them. So you approved all of those at that time, and unfortunately, and my error left off one position that we discovered recently during our preparation for the upcoming budget process. So I'm here today requesting that position number 2873, which should have been included in the original request, which is a behavioral health specialist, one case manager position that is critical to the daytime operations of the stabilization center, be considered as part of that original request and converted to regular. This position sets people up with the Oregon Health Plan, provides food boxes, housing referrals, and in addition is a, it helps contribute to putting on our crisis intervention training for law enforcement. And so when we had this position approved in the budget last year, it was so that we could increase the number of trainings we're providing to law enforcement, and this position's critical to being able to do that.
Thank you, Holly. Is there any other discussion regarding this? One person that somehow wasn't on the original Excel spreadsheet, I believe. It's always interesting, isn't it, when you find those kind of things?
So just when you mentioned the health services requested to convert 17 limited to regular, did you mean to do 18, or we did 16 instead of 17? I mean, yeah, what's the number there?
I believe we meant to do 18, but I'll have to go back and check. It was.
Okay, yeah.
The problem with, at the time when we requested all of these is that we, we had a lot of moving parts at the time. So people going from a .5 to a .6, from limited duration to regular, and I think this one just got lost in the shuffle. And that is my error and my sincerest apologies.
Understood.
No need to apologize. There's a lot, a lot of stuff going on, and I don't have any further questions.
Okay, so I'm assuming this will probably come back on our consent agenda at some point in time?
On Wednesday, is my understanding.
Wednesday. Okay. Any other questions, Commissioner DeBonne?
No questions.
Okay, thank you, Holly. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, so we're at legislative session update. Hello, Phil and Whitney.
Hi. Morning. Well, good afternoon, sorry. Good afternoon, so.
Whitney, did you want to take it away?
Sure. I'll just provide a brief introduction, and then I know that Phil has some items that we'll work through during today's legislative update. For the record, Whitney Hale, Administrative Services. We're here today as one of the board's routine legislative updates as we enter into the short session, but today, one of the items that I know is on all of your radars is the request for fiscal asks for the upcoming legislative session. And so Phil was going to provide a brief introduction about those asks and kind of what's eligible and what's not. He and I spoke earlier today, and he had some good feedback in terms of how we might frame our requests. My understanding is that these requests are due by the end of the day today, and so staff is gonna, we're prepared to share a brief draft for the board's feedback and consideration, and then following, you know, your direction in this item, we'll turn around and promptly try to turn these requests around to get them to our legislators. So I know Phil also will provide an update on timing and kind of bills that he's seeing, but that was kind of the first thing that we wanted to focus today's update on, just given the impending deadline that we have in front of us.
Since it's like 20 to 3, yes.
Yes, I have not been excited to get in front of you at all today, so.
I know.
So Phil, I don't, if that feels okay to the board, we'll probably jump right into fiscal requests.
Absolut, absolutely. That's good on my end, if it's good with the board. So this conversation got rolling early this morning. An email went out to all legislators asking them to have all funding requests to legislative fiscal or in hand by the end of day today, or how they phrase it was by the first. And so obviously, this is the last day of the month. Part of that, I believe, is coming from when we last talked, they were still debating whether they wanted to do the budget reconciliation bill on the very end of session or maybe move it sooner. And from all indications, I was not privy to the conversation, but from the actions of this going out to legislators today and seeing what agencies, we were working on a couple other bills, that agencies had to have, they got the same notice that their fiscal, preliminary fiscals needed to be inserted to by the end of day tomorrow, that sounds like they're going to move that budget reconciliation bill a little bit quicker than anticipated. In addition, that would then follow that string, that string of line thought would then think that they are going to have an, a consolidated budget, public hearing on budget items. And one second.
Okay, what's the puppy doing?
Sorry, the little doorstopper, she decided she just wanted to keep flicking it. Sorry about that. And so, what do you call it? So they have, so that would allow them to have that budget, public hearing, all as one consolidated thing with capital construction and agency request budgets in there. So as I was talking with Whitney, there, there wasn't a lot of parameters around this request to legislators. One of it was, I believe, the speaker and them, or speaker-to-be wants to start having one-on-one meetings with legislators and knowing what their district requests are going to be. So that is one reason why we need to get it to our sitting representatives. But the other reason, too, is legislative fiscal needs to start doing paperwork or at least start doing the balancing of the budget. So traditionally, what these requests are, are twofold. One, capital requests, that can, that could be new, obviously, first thing that comes to my mind is our courthouse, or maybe other projects in the communities. Or it could be program funding that is set to expire or was only given a one-time allocation that we're requesting additional funding for. Some examples, I saw Senator Drama, he had sent, he had sent out a list of his requests. He is asking for $5 million into equity programs through nonprofits, things like that that aren't traditionally in the budget currently but are asking to be added for the second half of the biennium. So that is the genesis of the request that came today through these emails that went out. I would, what I was sharing is the basic information we need to have is obviously the project name, who the recipient of funds, in this case being the county, needs to be, and any idea of total requests, dollar requests. What really makes your project rise to the top, though, is giving those finer details of if it's capital construction, do we have the land acquisition already in place? Do we have matching funds to go with it? On if it's program funding, I would say for this, this round or this special session, we really need to talk about how would these funding allocations help our, help our communities through the equity lens? That is where they are wanting to fund specific things, so those type of projects would rise to the top. And also public health. So public health is still forefront coming into the session, going through the bills. There's a lot of bills that I don't see moving forward, you know, traditionally, you know, eliminating the governor's executive order, or executive order power, that, I mean, that is regardless where you stand on the issue, I don't see that moving forward this session, those type of bills. But then right behind those are the funding request bills for community-based organizations to start having additional programs funded or having outreach to communities of color or minority populations. And so that's just the, our view of what we see, things that are going to be rising to the top quickly, and that on merit, obviously, as you folks know, at the end of session, there's always the politics side of things where, you know, another bill needs to be passed, and that might have connections to funding that needs to be allocated into an agency. So to that point, I guess I wanted to pause and see if we have projects or programs that we are wanting to submit funding for. We have two methods that we could do that through. LFO has a standard form that regardless, at some point, we need to fill out, and that's more for capital construction requests or capital funding requests. I have that blank form, it's two pages. And then the other approach is putting them in a standard letter on county letterhead and at least trying to hit those high points that I just talked about, the name, the total funding request, a brief description, and if there's any matching funds that the county's already committed to or that the county's already put money towards. This wouldn't be surprised if it was a transportation project and the county already did the engineering for it, you can allocate, you can say, we've already put money on the table for the engineering. So all of those things are big factors in the eyes of LFO so that the county looks like they have skin in the game. So I guess I just want to pause there and see if we, if there's any questions about the projects or if you want to discuss projects.
Well, I think we need to discuss projects. Okay, so like the Lapine Community Health Center, they actually have $2 million that they've, they've set up for the program. We have not allocated anything? Is that going to hurt us in this, in this case, to ask for that? The center really serves an enormous community, you know, south, maybe 25, 30,000 people. And they were actually open the whole time during COVID, which is really incredibly remarkable and, you know, really needed.
That was, that was the project that immediately came to mind for me as well, and I think we could probably claim whatever they've got in hand already as match, you know, against what the, the state legislature would provide.
And then the other one that I thought was important was our Rogue Retreat Homeless Camp in Redmond off of Highway 126. We were told that the utilities transferring into that project could be up to 350,000. I don't know, just, do you think that has any appeal as far as an equity issue?
No, I think that one would definitely be one that's in the purview of what the legislature wants to address this session. There's multiple, multiple bills around that subject area already. And as you, you folks already know, there's the technical fix bills for House Bill 2006 coming forward. On the other one, I sense that isn't money that the county's put in, and I guess I would ask the recipient of the funds, the strongest position would be the recipient of the funds making the, the request. If the county hasn't put money into it but is a supporter of it, I would definitely make sure that we have the box checked saying that they authorized us to put a request in on their behalf or in collaboration with them. If we can phrase it in the sense of collaboration with them, then yes, to the Commissioner's point, you can definitely count that match. And I would say any operational costs that have also gone, looking at this form, they also count if those projects have had matching funds as state funds, federal funds, private or other grant funds, and donations and gifts. And so, and then there's other revenues or financing, but those, that probably wouldn't be as applicable to those two projects that you just mentioned. But, you know, if they have a list of how that center got funded and how they want to expand the services, and this is a collaborative project so that if the recipient's Deschutes County and they're sending the money that way, then you can definitely count that as match. To the utilities, absolutely, oh, sorry, to the utility funding, absolutely, that is definitely one that's in the purview of the legislature. And I believe the only thing I think we need to be careful of is that we don't phrase it, we need to talk about the services it's going to provide. If we make it sound like it's a project that's just looking for utility extensions, there's, and things are moving so quick in the legislature, it's very easy for them to say, well, business organ has programs for that. But we need to make sure that we're clarifying that this isn't for a business expansion or a business, a private sector business, this is for services that are taking, that have a very direct public benefit. And so that's the only caution I put in the description of that project, but I think that 350,000 for, that would most likely. And so that's the only caution I put in the description of that project, but I think that three hundred and fifty thousand for, that would most likely be general fund. That also could be a part, ARPA-type project as well.
We know that, but we, our ARPA funding is, we just allocated three hundred and sixty-seven thousand for the Oasis Village within the Ten Acre Project that we're expanding on with Rogue Retreat designing it, and we paid thirty-two thousand on that. So I would hope that, you know, the utilities are a bit of an unknown. Has anybody found out if there is, or would we be getting water, or do we need to do a well?
Kristi is on Zoom. I had asked her if she would be able to join us to help and answer some of the questions you had about.
Because I'd said we should do a well if we're, if the water isn't on the highway. Just so it's, we, if we can actually ask her this funding and put it all together. Kristi, thank you for joining us.
Good afternoon. For the record, Kristi Bollinger, Deshues County Property Management. So the intent at this point would be to bring water under, so water's located currently on the south side of Highway one twenty-six, and so there's feasibility going on behind the scenes to determine what that would look like to bring that under the highway. I'm happy to, to display a map if that would be helpful. Don't know if I have control to do that. But it's basically the city of Redmond's infrastructure map, if you'd like to take a look to see where sewer and water is located. And then again, the intent would, this is looking at what that would look like to bring it under the highway to the ten acres. And then also to the, which could then also benefit the Core Three project.
Right, both projects.
Correct.
Okay, well, it's good to know that there is water there too, and that was probably, that was undoubtedly part of the cost that they were saying.
One, one question I have about this is, so this morning, we received the inquiry from Senator Lintecum's office. Is it, is it better for us to identify projects within a given legislator's district? Or is it okay for us to put out ideas from anywhere in the county?
And I'll let us bring Phil back up, but in talking with Phil about this prior to today's meeting, he indicated that he felt like making a consistent set of asks, regardless of district was okay, so that we didn't need to try to tailor the asks geographically in a specific way. But certainly if the board would rather do that, we're happy to modify these letters to reflect the projects that you'd like to ask for from specific legislators.
Did we get an invitation like this from all of the legislators, or just from Senator Lintecum?
We have received two invitations.
Yes, Representative Crop, Denise Asport also. But I think it's really important that we cross-reference every one of them in our county. You know, Representative Bree Iverson, Representative Maseka, Representative Bonham, you know, the more people. We do have a significant number of representatives and senators in our county. What is it, three senators? So listing all of them. And then what can we ask for, for the courthouse?
So Lee is here to talk about that. Lee and Commissioner DeBonne have been participating as part of the AOC OJD Courthouse Committee. And kind of how we have initially framed this for the board's consideration, which we're happy to modify, is that we might ask specifically for assistance in covering the portions of the project that deal with renovation of the existing courthouse. And then as our commitment and our proposed match, we would talk about the addition, the cost that goes into the addition. And really structuring the ask in that way mirrors the two channels that are set up as part of that AOC OJD committee, that you would either be renovating a courthouse, or you would be replacing a courthouse. And so I think this draft ask talks about specific costs, asking for assistance with costs that have to do with renovation, and then outlines what those specific items are.
And we've been real clear on that committee, you know, we just happen to be in that spot where we had an expansion plan from, you know, twenty-something years ago that we knew we were going to do someday, so we're not replacing it a failed one, and we're, it isn't just a boiler replacement, so, and we've been explaining that to them along the way.
So what is the number for that?
So right now, what we're proposing is one point five million.
Okay.
And for the record, Lee Randall, Facilities Director. Commissioner DeBonne and I were on a call last Monday, and it overlapped with the commissioner's regular scheduling meeting. And so I think there was some information provided after Commissioner Bone left for, for the commissioner's meeting, which was specifically for the AOC OJD Committee, to define specifically whether we're looking for replacement or renovation. And then secondly, to show specific what our ask would be, what we would be willing to match. And so that's kind of how we came up with this idea to focus on the renovation costs, which would, like, which will accompany the expansion, but aren't necessarily addressed in our expansion budget estimates.
So, this is amazing. Can we pull this all together in thirty-two minutes?
I guess one, one other question I have about this particular item is, so there's, there's a, you know, a state task force that's kind of working on making allocations for courthouses already. And we're going to maybe participate in, you know, submit something there. Is it for, for these legislative requests, is it do they want you to double submit, like something that's already going through a regular state program already? Or do they not want you to submit things that are potentially being covered by other, you know, regular state programs?
Wonder if Phil could.
I have no problem answering that. So this is just our view here, or, you know, budget according to Phil here. My thought is, yes, there is a fund that is established through the agency that does try to look at capital needs of courthouses and, in a methodical way, and then work down a list. But I would say, participating in that is absolutely appropriate. But I would say that if there's an opportunity to get direct funding, there is nothing wrong with doing that. There is, I don't think there's a legislative session where a project that's not just from that list has not gotten funded. Most specifically, and most probably the worst sample of how it could go bad is the Clackamas County Courthouse right now, where they took a chunk off of that list, and they came back for another round and another round. And now they're having complete public hearings on why have the costs gotten so much? So it's not, we would not be precedent-setting by trying to request an allocation separate from a task force. That task force also usually only gets funded, or usually gets the majority of their funding in the six-month sessions. The fact that this is a much lower request for capital construction than a traditional courthouse project is probably helpful. Actually, I wouldn't say probably, it's very helpful in a short session. So I, if it was up to the agency, they'd say stick to our list, but that's just not how the legislature works all the time. And so I would say it does not hurt having this project in front of legislators on multiple lists.
And I would acknowledge in our ask that we're participating in this other, you know, avenue also. So, I mean, we don't need to make it look like we're not. We would, we definitely put a sentence or two in there.
And if they do fund it separate, all that does to the other list is just real allocates their list and allows other projects to move up sooner.
According to our ELC A meeting, I was on a call early at nine AM, and they were saying that there's like a billion dollars that the state has, and you know, it's good that we're going to get on some of these asks.
So a couple of other things for City of Lapine, kind of specific projects. Remember that, that path, that gravelled path from Wiki up back into town, Class ninety-seven in the ODOT right-of-way, which I think they're, they've committed to. There may be an ask there just to provide amenities, or intersection support, or something like that. So, and I don't have details here today, but that's just a project that probably could use a little bit of money, you know, about this time would be a good time for it. And then also the Transportation Center in the City of Lapine. Remember, there's Huntington and the highway at Fourth Street, I think, is the road. They've got a parcel there with a fence around it where the bus stops in front of it, but it's going to need to be paved in their little building there someday. And I think they're really getting close to that. So, as I say, those are just jurisdictional things I know in the City of Lapine that I'm not prepared to give more detail on, but if we can get them on a list, somebody could ask.
And just to kind of, I did capture those per your email, but, and I, we've reached out to staff, and I haven't heard back yet. And kind of given the timing of today, I kind of just teed this up in the draft as please contact the city for additional information, but did note them if the board would like to have them included in the, the full letter.
And, you know, it's a good, it's a good exercise once in a while to think, okay, if there are capital dollars or project dollars coming through a process like this, you know, what would pop up? So it's okay to have these things on a list.
So what is the Lapine Health Center ask that we're going to do in our letter? Weren't they asking us for like five million?
So, and not to put you on the spot, Commissioner, I reached out to Greg, and it sounds like we're not sure if there was written narrative submitted for that project. And so I'm happy.
Oh, there is.
There is, okay. So I, if I can track that down, we can insert that into this draft letter. I think we were just maybe having miscommunication about what it was we were looking.
It said it was an estimated twelve million dollar project.
It's a twelve million dollar project. They have two million, and they were asking us for five.
That's it.
They said they needed to demonstrate that they've, they've got some skin in the game.
At some point, they can get to a.
Yeah, and First Interstate can do some gap funding for them. Anything else I can remember? Anyway.
The other, the other piece of that, or the, you know, in terms of how we, how we frame it for them, I mean, if we, and, you know, I'm trying to address Phil Scher's concerns about kind of whether we can claim their match or not, but we did discuss with them the idea of, of locating our expanded behavioral health services on their campus instead of, you know, in our current location, which is not optimum. In which case, you know, it becomes our project as well as their project, and, and, you know, we could request the money. We really could request the money for us, you know, for, you know, this, this behavioral health component of their overall campus project.
And just to clarify, how much would the board like to ask for specifically for that project?
We ask for four million? I mean, if they're, they ask us for five, we ask for four, and, and then we're going to have to put some more money in, especially if we're going to have our behavioral health moved there.
And I would assume funding would go directly to Lapine, to the Lapine Health Center?
Well, I, I mean, before we, we grab that number, Phil Scher's, is there, is there like a typical range on these kinds of requests? Four million sounds like a lot to me.
Yeah, on these short sessions, I would, I mean, that would be the upper, upper projects that I would think of. I, I mean, it's doable, but it's doable in the sense of the budget, not doable in the sense of, you know, rubber stamp. But I would say the one to three millions are probably going to be the ones that you're going to see a lot of funding on. And I guess I'm trying to work through my head as well of whether there's other funding sources for that. If it's under three million, they like to fund it through general funds so that they're not going up for bonding. If it's under two million is what I'm hearing, they're going to prioritize ARPA funds to spread those out as much as they can. And so once we cross the north of that three million, we're really looking at the bonding dollars specifically. And I know those are going to be in hot competition because I, there are some big requests out there with the Oregon State Hospital and things like that north of thirty million. And so.
So should we just ask for three million then? I mean, I would, I could see asking for three. I mean, they can always cut us back, but they're never going to give us four if we ask for two.
Well, I mean, any amount is.
Better.
I mean, my point is, you know, it's a twelve million dollar project they're trying to come up with, you know, if we put some words in there like that, if it's, I don't know exactly what the paperwork looks like.
Just the scope of the project.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because ask is whatever it is. You're saying, don't, don't put a specific dollar amount, just say it's a twelve million dollar project, and they got two million in hand, and.
Yeah, I mean, maybe something.
No, I think you, I think we should ask for three.
Well, this is for the legislators to maybe call and say, okay, what's a meaningful number, or do you have a, because, yeah. I mean, we, we don't have enough information up here, is what I'm thinking.
Keep in mind, I think at this time, giving those number, like, if you're asking for three, make sure you're identifying there's two million in the match. Commissioner Chang, as you mentioned, and I'm, I'm hearing this for the first time, so if I'm phrasing it wrong, please correct me. If I, if I understood you right, this would be the behavioral, the county's behavioral health cited at the, this, this other entity's facility. If there's any anticipation on, is the county have already numbers on what, are they committed to the operational costs and what those numbers are? One of the big things I'm hearing repeatedly in capital construction is, are we funding a project that's going to create an ongoing revenue need from the state? So if we can say, nope, the county is committed to the operational costs moving forward, we're not going to come back to the state and have them run the thing, then I think you should note that, given just the high level of this particular project. And I would say, let's try to grab some other things that I know are the buzzwords that LFO is looking for.
Well, that, that gets super complicated because, you know, much of the funding for our behavioral health division comes through OHA agreements. But I, I mean, I do think you could say that that, you know, we have a growing population, you know, the, the funding for behavioral health through OHA is growing as well. And we also secured, you know, we're, we're one of the, the federal CCBHCs, so that, you know, that provides, you know, a certain platform of, of operational funding as well. So I, I mean, and just kind of cast the whole thing in the trajectory of, you know, our behavioral health services have been growing. What you see happening in, in, in our, you know, our kind of planned North County campus is an example of just sort of like the growth trajectory of our health services across the whole county. And, and we're, you know, we, you know, we don't have, I don't have any concerns about us, you know, having the operational dollars to fill out that expanded, you know, facility space in, in North County. And this would be sort of like a next, you know, a next step in that process.
Well, Redmond's at thirty-six thousand two hundred people now. I mean, it's truly growing. But this is actually South County Behavioral Health that we have in a separate building with like the sheriff's office in, in Lapine, in South Lapine. And so by moving them, you know, that's what the Lapine Community Health Center said. They would really love to be able to move them, and then, you know, the people that are coming in for mental health can actually get, you know, other healthcare at the same time. They're really working on expanding their services, and I believe bringing in dental too. So it's, it's really a better health system, and it's, you know, a community that economically is lower. And the more services we can provide, it's, it's better.
Yeah, I mean, when we're talking, you know, we would definitely want to emphasize in terms of equity concerns that this is, you know, one of the most economically distressed parts of the county. And, you know, that's part of the reason why they have a federally qualified health center there, and, and this would be, you know, this investment would help to address those kinds of equity concerns in our community.
I think that's, that's a good way to phrase it.
And we just tracked down the narrative that was submitted, so we have that. So I think that your discussion and the written submission will give us more than enough, I think, to pull into the, the draft. So that's perfect. So I just, I have the two Lapine specific projects that Commissioner DeBonne noted, and then obviously the Lapine Community Health Center, the extension of infrastructure to serve the ten acres and Core Three in Redmond, and the court renovation costs. Is there anything else that the board would like to see in a draft letter, coming back to you hopefully under other items today?
Sounds like a really.
That's plenty.
Yes. We don't want to, you know.
I mean, the.
It's helpful.
You know, kind of along those lines, I, I would ask, would it make sense for us to throw in our North County campus? You know, like, ask for a, you know, a million dollars towards our North County Campus project? towards our North County Campus project in, in Redmond as part of this, you know, if there is a real emphasis on public health and equity aspects, I mean, I think we can, we have some pretty strong angles to play there as well.
What do you think, Phil?
Um, that, I would leave that up to you folks. I think if we add that, that we kept that at five requests, and unless we're saying the cities need to do the advocacy on theirs, and then that leaves us with the three, if I understood the county, the, the relationship there on some of those. But five is a lot for a short session. So it's, it's not a large request in terms of the budget. So I think maybe we can add that if there's, if we have the information, it doesn't hurt to add that. And I think, to the point on the beginning of this conversation, where whether we break these projects up into legislative districts, I think maybe that then will allow us to say, here's our letter of consistent project requests that we give to each legislator in Deschutes County. But each of them can see that there's something in their area. And they can see that through the communities that they represent. But I think having it consistent, you don't have one legislator going to the speaker saying, this is Deschutes priorities they gave me. And, you know, another one saying, here's two different projects that Deschutes gave me. It's very consistent and we keep it to these five. So.
How much are the two you were asking for?
Oh, they're probably minimal. I mean, you know,
What's minimal?
A thousand or a couple hundred thousand is going to be wonderful for those projects.
Each one at a hundred thousand?
Uh, no, probably the path would be a hundred thousand and the park would be 250 maybe to, to really rock that transit center.
And the path goes from where to where?
Burgess Road down to the core of Lepine, the kind of first street to
This isn't the one that runs parallel to 97, is it?
Yeah, that's what I'm referring to.
Okay.
As I say, those are just, those are on the near term horizon. You know, if there was a little extra funding right now for those projects, they're, it'll be folded right in, you know, because that's the only reason I brought them up. I don't know the specifics of those right now.
Okay.
That one, we could, we could, we could, we could blow that one up to include the undercrossing under Highway 97 for the wildlife too, which is going to need to be coordinated with that, with that north-south path. But that might be making things too complicated.
Um, we're giving Whitney a huge assignment with not very much time, with a lot of cross referencing to a lot of legislators. And I kind of, I like it where, I think, I think this is good. Where we are.
If we get one piece of paper with the, you know, prioritize projects by name for the county, and somebody says, oh, what, what is this? They can call us back and get more info is what I'm thinking, you know.
Yeah. I mean, the, the amount of, sometimes it's very hard to provide concise, high level information as opposed to lots and lots of information. But I, I'm thinking what we're submitting today is quite brief.
Yes, I think it will be brief but informative. Just to circle back, North County Campus, would you like to include or not for today's ask?
I think we've asked for
I'd like to include that. But it's just me.
You would or would not?
I would, you know.
I'm thinking I'd, I'd rather prioritize, I mean, the utilities across 126 is pretty exciting. It's very timely. So, and we're, you know, we, we can schedule the, the tenant improvements and all the other stuff at the other property. So I'd not put it on this time.
Okay. We'll work on this and come back under other items with a draft for the board's review and then turn and submit that hopefully by the end of the day today.
It totals 5.2 million. Is that what you have?
I have not totaled yet, but I will.
Okay. Anyway, we want to get some of our, the billion, right? That's going to sit there. And it's surely going to go to Portland if we don't ask for it. Right, Phil?
I always say, they're going to spend the money.
Right.
If you don't put the request in there, you know, it's going to be spent somewhere else. So.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
The session starts tomorrow, huh?
It, it does. And I was just going to say, so I know that I don't want to keep you folks too long and I'm going to breeze through these. We are in the process of going through the first cut of the legislative bills. And again, it is a first cut. They were released end of last week. And there was just north of two, 250. I've got that down to seven, six pages of bills, which I know, again, I went wide on our, on our view of this. So there's, there are some that I know will probably be ruled off the list and some that maybe will be added. But there are a few here that I sent over and I anticipate that as the, as Whitney and the team goes through them, we're going to start prioritizing similar to like we did last time where it's one through four, or sorry, one through five. I say four because if it's a five, then I, I, I think it's one of those, we don't want to waste our time on it, things. And so a couple of them are that I had questions on is, for instance, the first one that came up was ag overtime. And I guess through my lens, I'm looking at these, what is directly affecting the county? But on this bill, I also know that you three have very broad constituencies that are probably going to be asking you a lot of questions about this. So does it affect the county directly? Probably not. But your constituencies, I would assume very much so. So for ag overtime bill, I put that on the list to track so that you are kept in the loop. You know what's, the current proposals are. And then when people in the community are asking you, you have those answers. Is that, is something that you want me to, to do in these lists moving forward? I guess there was a few bills that are going to fall under that category.
I think it's a relatively minor issue for our county. So I'd, I'd rather spend time tracking other things, but.
I agree.
Okay. All right. Well, then I will move that either completely off the list or we can prioritize that to four or five way down the list. The one question I do have, there are a few bills here that are directly related to, oh, actually, before I get that. So Representative Chang, I do have the bill number now for the wildlife crossings. And that bill is going to be getting a hearing in the session. It's a public hearing currently, but I don't know if they're going to move it to a work session. That is House Bill 40, oh, sorry, not, that is a different one. Here we go. I typed in wildlife and there was three that came up and I thought it was that one. I will get you that bill number. It's not popping up on that list. But it is assigned a bill number. I checked in on it. It is going to get a public hearing. On that case, I just wanted to make sure you knew that in case there was any public, uh, public testimony that you wanted to submit for it. And from the conversations I'm hearing about it, they are, they're, they're looking at either if the funds are there to establish the program and help with funding certain crossings, or just establish a fund, a program that local entities can tap into and fund it in the next biennium. So it could have two different routes. I just wanted you to know I followed up on that after our last board conversation. And that's what I'm hearing from the, the committee members that were introducing the bill.
Great. Thank you. So a couple of questions about testimony. A, do you have, how do we, how do we track when that hearing is going to be? And B, is it, if I wanted to like send a letter in advance of that, is it better to wait for a certain time or just send it as soon as possible?
So if you sent, let me do the last question first. So the, if you sent it today, they would post it in OLIS, but that isn't, you would still have to sign up on the registry paper for the actual public hearing. They won't talk about it or discuss it in the actual meeting if you just submitted it directly. And that's done just through email, but they will post it. So there are members that are very students, very methodically go through every single posted testimony in there. There's others that don't. Now, if you wanted to speak to it, then yes, I believe last session, they were about a couple hours to sometimes they posted 24 hours in advance where you could sign up for testimony. You were put on a list and then you were called in. You were just called up just like if you were in person. But they just can't guarantee they'll get through to you on the list. Traditionally, they have been calling elected officials up first, so county commissioners, mayors, things like that. Knowing when it is, on that spreadsheet that we went over in the last meeting, if we have that flagged as a priority, one, two, one or two, I was putting though, and I think even threes, I put them on that chart. And each day, our system will pull anything that's scheduled. The perk of having a short session and timelines attached to the work sessions is they are posting ahead of advance. So for instance, they've said they've, it's going to get a public hearing. After they convene tomorrow morning, they will publish the updated agendas and will be able to have those dates ideally. So, and I can also get you the referral list. So they just emailed out on Friday and one came in Saturday, while technically the bills get their first reading tomorrow. And then they get referred to a committee. They, the leadership has already gone through and referred them to the committees and they sent out a preliminary referral list. So we know which could, we don't have to wait till tomorrow. We know which members to start talking to. So I can get you those as well, or at least look where the bill's going to go. So.
Yeah.
So, but yes, I, I will update that, that weekly look ahead. And since we're meeting weekly, ideally you would have several days to be able to plan for that. So, and that brings up a good point too. Technically, they still adhere, they do not, they have, this is not one hour notice yet. So we do have, they still have to follow the 24 hour notices of posting until the speaker declares according to House rules or the Senate President that they're down to one hour notices. So we are not in one hour notices yet. So we should have at minimum 24 hours notice. So.
Thank you.
The other thing is, there are a couple of bills that are related to the, the county. For example, the, this one is House Bill 4087. This one is after January 1 of 2023 that it, officials of public bodies must grant media representatives to scenes of wildfires and natural disasters on any public lands otherwise closed to the public. Those type of bills are starting to pop up. Not that, where it's just prohibiting a local government from doing a specific action. And they seem to be very specific, like there was an issue in one place of the state that this bill has originated because of. I put those in the list as well. Some of them, as you folks, as you go through them, please let me know if you want those taken off or not. Again, this is a first cut so that we can at least start broad and get really narrow in our focuses and not, Commissioner Chang, to your point, not expend efforts on things that aren't top priority for the county. So, but I, I do know that, I think I just reached my time. I have, we have those over. Those are going through the list. And I think we're getting comments, or there should be going out for comments from departments and then back to you for prioritization. So, but I will have to say, this is the first time I've delivered just six pages of bills to you. I think in the past, we were double digits multiple, multiple times. So it's getting better. So.
So Phil, did you send us that bill on recreation sales tax on like four wheelers and things? That was discussed this morning. They were saying that it would be beyond recreation. It would be probably pretty impactful into Deschutes County where so many people have four wheelers. I don't have the bill number with me.
Can you just say that again?
Recreation, uh, sales tax on recreational vehicles. Like if you buy a four wheeler, you've got to pay a tax on it?
Gotcha. And are they calling that an excise tax again? Like we, I know that there's disagreements in the terminology there, but I, I just want to make sure that if I look up sales, I will track it down. I just want to make sure I'm looking in the right place.
Okay.
I
I'm not sure if they were calling it excise tax. They just felt like it would be impactful for agricultural because they use a lot of four wheelers. So it's going to go beyond recreation, people. It, and they, they actually mentioned Deschutes County this morning because we have so much recreation. I mean, probably it includes like snowmobiles and things. If you buy a snowmobile, you've got to pay a tax on it. So are you seeing anything?
Um, I haven't yet, but I can go back through and I'll do a second look for something specific to that. I have not seen that. I've seen other bills where they can adjust fees for recreational opportunities tied to hunting tags, where the agency doesn't have to go back and get authority to lower tag prices below the statutory thing. But I haven't seen anything yet close to that. But I will check. There's going to be some more bills dropped tomorrow because the, if they got their, if, if they were able, if a legislator used their two bills and met the deadline of the 14th, that means they got first read tomorrow, or they will get first read tomorrow. They still can, if somebody didn't drop their two bills with the chief clerk or secretary of the state, they can drop at any time. It just is very unlikely that they're going to meet the other deadlines. So you might see a few more that pop up tomorrow and that might be one of them. But I'll double check.
Okay. All right. I'll, I'll send you a message of what it is on my notes.
Thank you. All right. And then I think for our next meeting, if it's okay, Commissioners, we should have the more formal bill report that you are used to seeing with prior, at least suggested priorities. And then I think I have also asked for Senator Knopf, rather than trying to get all the legislators on one call, which didn't seem to work, I'm trying to figure out how do we get some, like at least get one on each one where they can have a robust conversation with you. I've extended that first to Senator Knopf. And then I figured I'd reach out to Jason and then maybe Vicky Breeze-Hyverson. I'm just trying to see where schedules align. I'm giving them the list of our meetings and saying, does one work better for your legislative calendars in your committee hearing? So at least each committee, each meeting we have, you hear from one of your elected officials in the legislature. So.
Great.
So when's our next meeting?
I believe that, next Monday?
Except I don't think we're now meeting next Monday.
Is it AOC Day?
That's Tuesday. Tuesday.
Okay.
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Yeah, Tuesday.
And you think Senator Knopf might be able to be available that day?
That's the request I put in. And so he said, he texted me back and said, check with my staff and make sure that works. But they also, he needs to, he couldn't remember all the committee schedules. So.
Okay.
But I figured starting, he's in a leadership position, we can at least get a high level update on what sessions looking for from that perspective. And then Jason is in some key policy committees. And then as they get that, his review would come right around those deadline times. So we could get a, a, an update from that lens as well.
Great.
Speaking of Senator Knopf, I, I was curious, Phil or either of my fellow Commissioners, has any of you heard about a bill called SB 1573? So Senator Knopf is, I believe, the, the primary sponsor. And the, the intent behind the, the legislation is to send $5 million apiece to a number of forested counties, including ours, was, was pretty interesting to me, for forest thinning activities on public lands, which could possibly be really helpful, but also like coming at a moment right now where there's going to be so much funding for fuels reduction on federal lands under the, the infrastructure, the federal infrastructure bill. It's also, you know, I, I have some concerns about whether, how well this was coordinated because there may not be enough NEPA ready acres to spend the money on if, if it all arrives at the same time with the, with the federal funds. So I, yeah, so I haven't heard about, okay.
Not at all.
I can, I can follow up.
The only thing I've heard, Commissioner, I have heard a little bit about that. I, when I heard about it, I questioned why it was, they were asking $50 million of general fund. And the only reason I bring that up is to your question. They chose the general fund allocation so that it didn't prohibit them from timelines. And so if, if the case came that one county could do it all in one year versus another county that couldn't, general fund doesn't have those, those strict timelines if they use other sources. But that, I mean, this was in passing conversation and I did not think at the time to ask more specifically about Deschutes. So if that's helpful in any way.
Yeah. And I mean, a number of the counties are in Western Oregon and they have, they have state forest lands. So when they talked about being able to spend the monies on, on, on public forest lands, that, that's kind of a whole different animal. But we don't really have state forest lands in Deschutes County. So our only option to spend the monies would be on federal lands and, and you definitely need a certain amount of coordination to make, make things like that happen.
Great. Thank you.
Is there any other questions I can attend to or track down for you folks?
Nope. Just time to do our homework on this.
Nope. Just time to do our homework on the spreadsheet, it sounds like.
We need our giant spreadsheet, or our mini spreadsheet.
All right. Well, I will be in standby mode, and we will start, you should have another legislative update in your inboxes at the end of this week as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Phil.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners. And thank you, Whitney and Nick and everybody.
Great. Laura, do you want to introduce our next guest?
All right. Thank you. For the record, Laura Skundrick, Administrative Services. During the Board's fiscal year 22 Video Lottery Fund Allocation Discussion, you initiated three new special project grants, each receiving $20,000, to support their project operations. Last week, we heard from one of these grantees, Deschutes Collaborative Forest Project, and today we get to hear from the other two. So we will start off with Friends of the Children, and their Executive Director, Rachel Cardwell, is here to provide you with a mid-year report on projects and priorities.
Welcome, Rachel.
Thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be here with you, Commissioners. Thank you for the invitation to give this report in person. It is a joy to be around people these days, and sharing the good work that we do at Friends of the Children. So thank you for inviting and for your investment in our program. I will scoot through these slides, and please feel free to ask questions along the way. I'm happy to provide clarifications to anything included in here today. What I wanted to really jump into is more in-depth details of how we, how we execute our model, our data-driven model for mentorship for the youth who need us the most, really. And so our roots run deep in this, in this community, but also very much sit within this model. We pair long-term, salaried mentors with kids who are facing the highest risks for 12 and a half years, no matter what. It's important to recognize two pieces in there. The long-term and salaried mentorship. We are the only program of the, of our kind in the country. We are one of 25 chapters across the country. There are, there are organizations like ours in New York, LA, and everywhere in between. We are one of a handful of rural chapters. And so how we do that here looks a little different than our partners in those communities. But we're, we're very honored to be a model for rural execution of this, of this program. Our long-term salaried mentors are important to understand, it takes a full-time, professional, paid person to do what we do. We get compared to organizations like Big Brothers, Big Sisters, a whole lot, another really well-known mentoring organization. Comparatively, we, and let me jump into this next piece, those, those salaried mentors spend a minimum of four hours a week, every week, with the kids that we serve. Two of those four hours are in school. And so a big part of our program is rooted in educational achievements. We set roadmap goals. So kids are involved in setting goals for themselves around school, around life, and, and learning the value of goal-setting and the rewards that come from achieving those goals. We, we move them, we encourage them toward, toward specific things called core assets, things that we know build resilience in young kids, in particular, kids who have experienced significant trauma. The kids in our program come to us as, as kindergartners, very typically between the ages of four and six. And already by that young age, they have experienced no less than six, we call them aces, adverse childhood experiences. So this trauma born at a very young age sets kids pretty typically on a path to dependency on government programs, dependency on any sort of social system for the rest of their lives. And it's really the design of our program that's meant to break those cycles and break that dependency. We pair them with a friend. As a chapter, we make a commitment to that kid and to their family, whether that be a foster family or a caregiver, a blood relative, that we will have a friend for that child for 12 years until they graduate from high school. So it's a long-term, intensive investment that we make in each child. We are asked a lot, why can't you do what you do with volunteers? And not, not speaking down about volunteers, the power of volunteering is, is huge. In our community alone, the number of hours that people invest in volunteering is substantial. But for the kids that we serve, having experienced the trauma that they've experienced, it takes more. It takes more, and they're worth, they're worth every minute, every dollar that we invest in them. These are our friends. Our mentors are who we call friends. They are the Friends of the Children. Colleen, Corey, Danny, Aaron, Flavius, Brandy, and Ryan. Each manage a roster of between six and eight children. So that's where the hours add up to a full-time employee, with four hours a week with each of their kids, plus time for administration. We, we are a data-driven model, so it takes time to track the data in our data, our database, as well as interacting with caregivers, with teachers, with mental health professionals, with social workers and caseworkers that rounds out their 40-hour work week. These, these are the magic makers. These are the people who do the work that we're very proud to do. I am under no confusion that their job is a million times harder than my job on any given day, because they sit in the muck with our kids and with our families, and they do the hard work that is our work. They provide individualized and intentional time with each of these kids. It isn't, it isn't a clean package for each of our children. They are unique, wonderful individuals with huge potential, and they are tasked with identifying what that potential is and pulling out individually what each kid needs to have pulled out and developed those roadmap goals. All of our activities, all of their outings, whether in school or out of school, are designed to reach that potential and unlock what we know to be really wonderful futures for those kids. And then we are there wherever and whenever. And at no other time than in the last two years have we known this to be true. Our, our friends and mentors get called into every crisis moment that these kids experience. They are a trusted advisor, helping parents and the, and the children through the worst of the worst. They will always be there, no matter what. So back to this model, and what does it get us? Because our model is based on early enrollment, early intervention, the oldest of our kids today are in fourth grade. We opened in 2017, so that first cohort is, is in the middle of their fourth grade school year. As we look to our partner chapters across the country, we are working toward outcomes like this. 83% of children in this program across the country are graduating high school. 92% are going on to college, a full-time, living wage job, or the military. 93% are avoiding interaction with juvenile justice. And 98% are avoiding teen parenting. And so the combination of those outcomes, we know through decades of research, will break the cycle of generational poverty. It means that these kids will be able to step into adulthood with confidence that they can be successful. So how are we growing? What are our plans within this region to serve, serve the children of Central Oregon? We get back to our people. Our team will grow by two more positions this year, by this, by this summer. I'll put the summer deadline on there. We will have hired our eighth friend, our eighth mentor, and expanded our rosters to serve 61 total kids. That eighth friend will very likely have a more rural focus and be serving kids outside the Bend core. We'll be looking at Lapine, Redmond, and perhaps a partnership with Crook County to be serving kids on a more rural footprint. The reality is, we know kids come to us and are referred to us from, from two partner schools within Bend. But these kids are in and out of foster care. Their parents are being forced out of Bend because of cost of living, and we must maintain our services across the tri-county footprint to make good on that, no matter what commitment to them. So partnerships with your counterparts in the tri-counties are essential to our success over the long haul. The position I am perhaps most excited to tell you about today is this education and family specialist position. Coming out of COVID, we are keenly aware of what our children have lost in terms of their school experience. The gap that they may have been experiencing before COVID in terms of educational achievement is even bigger today. This education and family specialist position will not only engage our caregivers and parents in the educational achievements of their kids, but is also a licensed teacher. She comes to us with experience in assessing educational challenges for each kid. Will be providing individualized assessments for each child and creating a plan as it comes to academic achievement for those kids. It's a really exciting piece to be investing in and will be the cornerstone of what we call a two-gen approach. A two-generation approach has shown, has shown over time that parents who are involved in the work that we do yield not only additional outcomes for themselves, but even better outcomes for our kids. Those percentages that I just talked about, they will get even higher through a two-generation approach. And then the other piece that will be a forever investment for us is the ranch. Last fall, sorry, two falls ago, it's now been over a year, October of 2020, we purchased the ranch, nearly 20-acre property on Old Bend-Redmond Highway between Bend and Redmond. This property will be, to me, the way that we provide equitable services to our kids. So much of the quintessential Central Oregon experience that kids get to live out just by living here, so much of that experience is lost for our kids. They don't get to go floating down the Deschutes. They don't get to go hiking and understand the history of our land. They don't get to learn trades and what it means to work on a farm at the ranch. They will learn all of these things. They will learn what it means to be a Central Oregonian and what it means to take responsibility for residing here. And finally, our future. I think about what our program will look like in five or 10 years when we are graduating our first class of kids and watching them walk across the dais of high school graduation. I think about what the ranch will look like on those days and how we'll know we succeeded. And outside of those outcomes, high school graduation, going to college, avoiding juvenile justice, what's the most important thing that I want to see our kids, and our kids? And it's that, that society and being part of systems hasn't broken them. I want to hear that they can dream about their future and know that within them is the ability to achieve it. I want to hear that they see things that exist in front of them that their parents didn't know existed, or didn't know how to build a pathway for them. I want to know that they can dream. Yeah. And I don't know if this next part is going to work, but we'll see. Maybe. Oh, it did. That's the world we are making for our kids. Thank you for your investment and your partnership and your belief that we can do this with our youth.
Oh, my gosh. Well, you know, it's one of my very favorite. And I love that you have the ranch now. I think that's really, like, just for those kids to be able to get out there and, you know, walk around and hopefully the garden's going to be growing this.
Yep, yep. We just started looking at hoop houses and what we're going to be building and planting this spring. Absolutely.
I know. I have a dear friend who lives right down the road, and I'm like, Tully, you've got to go over and help those kids. Her garden was just, I know, her garden was so unbelievable. Of course, it was so hot in June, and if you had any water, things, I mean, she was raising like cantaloupe and all kinds of things that don't normally grow that well here. So, no, I, I'm so proud of your program and the continuity and the fact that you actually can see that kids graduate, and it does make such a difference. And you were explaining to me earlier that you bring in the family and you've realized that, you know, we have to have the family part of this. And I think it's wonderful. So, thank you, Rachel.
Thank you very much for sharing today, yes.
Could I ask a question or two?
Of course, please.
So first off, just congratulations on arriving at this model that is clearly extremely impactful and successful for kids. Really neat to hear about. I am, I'm, I'm curious if you have a sense of how many, how many kids in Deschutes County or in our community would be eligible, like, you know, fit your, fit the criteria for your program? Because, you know, I hear about this amazing opportunity, and I would love to see all the kids who are, who, who need it have that kind of an opportunity. And so I'm trying to get a sense of, you know, what the, you know, what the gap is between need and, and service level and, you know, also just to kind of get some order of magnitude sense of what that would, what that would actually cost to do. Because, you know, that, an extremely intensive, you know, intensive model that is, that is effective, but like, how many, how many of the people who need the, who need this kind of support are getting it?
Yeah. And so I want to answer that in two ways. One, very real point in time. So we are about to select additional youth into our program. There are, there are rosters, our two most recent friends today don't have a full eight. Through this next selection process, they will move to a full eight youth on their roster. So that'll be filled there. And then the addition of an eighth friend, that will create 15 additional kids in our program. For those 15 slots, we've had over 30 referrals. So we're meeting half the need that we're aware of. That said, selection, selection always happens in partnership with other agencies. So those particular referrals come to us from Deschutes County Behavioral Health. We work, we work pretty well and, and have been historically selecting from two Title I schools in Bend, and have some partnerships existing in Lapine and in Redmond as well in Title I schools. So those, those come to us, the referrals from teachers, from fan advocates that are placed in those schools, from administrative professionals, the principal, whoever it might be that we're, that is aware of our program. I would say it is hard to, to say how many kids have experienced six adverse childhood experiences by the time they enter kindergarten. I don't know that that, that we know that number. And if we do, let's, I'd love to hear it, right? But I think many of those, many of that track, much of that tracking system would exist in a system that we don't necessarily have access to for an entire population in Deschutes County. I'm not aware of, of that, that number specifically. But that is really the minimum qualification for a referral to our services, that they are the right age, and they have that many traumas that are documented, really, or can be, can be proven in a sense by the time they're referred to us. That launches into a pretty robust selection process. We observe the kids in school. We go into their homes and conduct a, a pretty intensive observation as well. And so what's really unique about this particular model as well is in a, in a pool of referrals. So within those 30 kids, we will take the highest needs of those 30. So the 15 kids who, who already have had six traumas, who are the right age, who are struggling at home or in school, it's the 15 who are struggling the most that we serve. Those other 15 very well could need a friend as in addition. We just don't have the space to do that. But the beauty of our program is, is we can have exponential impact, right? The model's already there. It is a matter of, of fundraising to hire more friends, to have more mentors. So we could be, we could be serving as many kids as possible, most especially because of our ranch and the asset that we have to run our business out of there. But the, the hurdle is really one of being able to pay more employees to do this work. But the hurdle is really one of being able to pay more employees to do this work. And so partnerships with Deschutes County, partnerships with, with child welfare, with the state Youth Development Division through the Department of Education, as well as, as substantial, the vast majority of our funding comes from private sources. So it's those partnerships that really will make it possible for us to expand and serve more kids in a broader footprint. The, the cost per kid, I don't, I don't know that I have that number handy either. If I could ballpark it for you, I would say in a, in a year, it's about, it's somewhere between $15,000 and $17,000.
Thank you.
And I do think you bought the ranch, before you got, Kim bought the ranch right at the perfect time before.
I, I think it was incredibly fortuitous for us. So the pandemic hit and we were not going to our office. We used to have a clubhouse and run our program out of the Corporate Business Park up on Empire there. And the lease was up for renewal, and they said, you know what? We're not using it anyway. Let's just make the leap. Let's do it, let's do it now. And every day that I drive down the driveway at the ranch, I cannot imagine a more perfect setting for the execution of this model.
Truly, it is. Thank you so much for coming in today.
Thank you.
And, you know, hopefully, private citizens will hear what your program is doing and, you know, we can, our community can come up with more help for those kids that truly need it. I know you, you pick the kids that desperately need it, but then there's those right above it. So, thank you, Rachel.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. I'll extend an invitation to all of you for a visit of the ranch. I would love to give you a tour and show you our program in action. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So now we will get to hear from the Deschutes Basin Water Collaborative, and I will hand it over to Lisa Seals from the Deschutes River Conservancy and Scott Akok from COIC.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Scott Akok, Community Economic Development Director at COIC.
And I'm Lisa Seals, a new Programs Manager at the Deschutes River Conservancy. Thanks so much for having us today. We're excited to report on the work of the Deschutes Basin Water Collaborative. So before we jump into what the Deschutes Basin Water Collaborative is up to or has been up to, I just want to give you a little bit of background information about the work, basically the collaborative work that's been ongoing in the basin for quite some time, starting with the, the founding of the Deschutes River Conservancy, which happened in 1996. And the mission of the Deschutes River Conservancy is to restore steam, stream flows and water quality throughout the Deschutes Basin. And we do this with a collaborative, multi-stakeholder board that represents key public and private interests, including farming, ranching, hydropower, recreation, tribal and environmental interests. And we make all of our decisions by consensus. So, yeah, before we started working in the Deschutes Basin, 98% of the flows in the Deschutes River were diverted for irrigation, and Whitechutes Creek ran dry two out of every three years. And the Crooked River was also extensively diverted and would only leave a trickle of water through Smith Rock State Park. So through collaborative efforts, though, over the last 20 or 30 years, you can see from this graph that we have been quite successful working with, in partnership with other entities and have restored as much as 208 CFS to key reaches throughout the Deschutes Basin. So now, Whitechutes Creek, that used to formerly run dry through the middle of Sisters in the summertime, is a free-flowing, is a free-flowing stream once again, and it's approaching state flow targets. The Crooked River, which used to have only 10 CFS, now has 60 CFS in it near Smith Rock, and Fish Passage at Opal Springs has opened up the Crooked River for the reintroduced Steelhead and Salmon. And the Middle Deschutes has seen a fourfold increase in flows. So, that's the good news. We also have achieved these, these flow restoration and water quality benefits through balanced and holistic approaches. So in addition to those benefits to the streams, we've also maintained or improved reliability for agricultural users, and we've created a generation of groundwater mitigation, mitigation credits for cities while also improving the collaborative capacity of our community to all work together to achieve these results. However, the bad news is that key issues still remain to be resolved, starting with the Upper Deschutes flows out of WikiUp. As I'm sure you all have heard, we have the Endangered Species Act listed Oregon Spotted Frog, which has exacerbated flow issues in the upper river and really sort of exacerbated the risks, the agricultural interests, particularly junior, junior irrigators up in the North Unit region. And we continue to need reliable groundwater mitigation for municipal water users. So there are, there's still lots of good work to be done. This is a picture of the Upper Deschutes River during the non-irrigation season, so essentially now, this is what, what we might see on the upper river where flows have drastically, drastically increased in the summer and then gone down in the, in the wintertime, causing erosion, and then you get freezing and thawing, and causes all sorts of problems, and some of which end up in our beloved mir pond. So again, the good news, we have an excellent history of working together, starting with the formation of the DRC, and then we had the formation of the Deschutes Basin Board of Control in 2002. There have been several collaborative efforts underway in the basin over the years. First was the Deschutes Water Alliance, and following that, we had the Deschutes Water Planning Initiative, and then most recently, the Upper Deschutes Basin Study Work Group. So, from the Upper Deschutes Basin Study, we have learned some really valuable information. And we've learned, most importantly, that common information across the different stakeholders is invaluable. So it was really important to have the, the valuable information that was provided by the basin study, which, by the way, was jointly funded by the Bureau of Reclamation and the Oregon Department of Water Resources. And the, the funding was leveraged with additional grants and a large collaborative effort that essentially showed us that we have now a common source of information, and we do fortunately have tools to solve these problems. And collaboration can create real lasting results, but needs to be supported in the long term. So this is some of the information that came out of the basin study. The graph, the pie chart on the left shows you where water currently goes in the basin, sort of the, the division of water rights. Got about 86% of the water rights in the basin are going to agricultural uses, 12% are in stream, and about 2% are for municipal uses. And then on the right, you can see that over the next 50 years, these are the projected unmet needs in the basin, which amount to somewhere between 130 and 500,000 acre feet, depending on the year. 80% of those unmet needs are in rivers and streams, and 20% lie in agriculture, again, mostly with the junior irrigation districts that are up in the North Unit, in the Madras area. And I will note that municipalities are, are part of that 80% of rivers and streams, and municipal needs are incorporated into that 80% because in-stream needs, water must go in-stream essentially to mitigate for groundwater pumping. So that's kind of how that, how that plays out. So that's what we, we need to resolve. I'm going to pass it on to you, Scott.
Thanks, Lisa. And so this is kind of where COIC got involved after all those years of experimentation and collaboration and building studies and getting, laying the groundwork. We had a study, the Upper Deschutes Basin Study, but we didn't have a plan, a shared plan of action. And I think, you know, the really cool thing is because there has been so much shared work in the basin for so many years, folks already get that collaborating can actually, as Lisa said, can actually produce tangible results here. There are tools, there is funding, it's, you know, there's only so much funding and you have to really be competitive for it, but when we have more folks on the same page versus fighting in court, we have a better chance of getting that funding. So about three years ago, at one of our regional administrator meetings, which is where we convened the city, city managers and county administrators, a few of the cities said, hey, the Upper Deschutes Basin Study is coming to a close. We used to have this thing called the Deschutes Water Alliance. Maybe it's time to get that group back together and start talking about turning the corner from the study to, to implementation. And you should note, there's implementation happening all the time anyway. It's not like folks are waiting to implement. But so in terms of setting the course of the next however many years of implementation projects, some of which are probably pretty big ticket in terms of the cost, it was time to kind of build a, a shared plan. And so we started off looking at re, you know, reforming the Deschutes Water Alliance. But after doing interviews with all the primary stakeholders, of course, the DRC folks here, the tribes, irrigation districts, the cities and counties, environmental groups, they wanted to change the model. The Deschutes Water Alliance was primarily kind of, it was elected officials and, and some of the key interests, but it wasn't a very big table. There was a perception that there wasn't a whole lot of in-stream interest at that table, other than the, the Deschutes River Conservancy. And of course, you know, the in-stream interests are some of the folks that potentially could be going to court over stuff. So they need to be engaged with the process of building a plan. So we did, oh, I don't know how long it was, maybe a year and a half worth of different proposals for the development of the Deschutes Basin Water Collaborative. And essentially where we kind of ended up was creating an, an entity that anyone who was around the table at the basin study, so the Basin Study Working Group could member and any, could, could be a member, and anyone else could petition to join. The result is we have, last count, it was 44 organizations that have adopted the charter and signed on to be members to be, which means they can vote on different kinds of issues. And we really were initially sort of tracking implementation efforts, and then we finally got to the point where everyone around the table supported individual implementation efforts. They were fine, but they wanted to see how it all worked together. So we turned the corner and started the process of building an actual comprehensive plan. I forgot to mention the roles here. So Deschutes River Conservancy, their whole team, they're really focused on sorting through all the different projects and solutions, the technical side. They have rich knowledge in that. They have been at, at all those tables, helped develop all the, the basin study itself. COIC helped build the collaborative process, and we provide neutral facilitation. So that's the roles between us. Do I have another slide? I don't remember. Okay. And so the emphasis of the effort now is the Upper Deschutes and, and, well, the Middle Deschutes all the way down to Lake Billy Chinook, but it is a Deschutes Basin Water Collaborative. So just as a note that, that, you know, the, the Crooked River, the Lower Deschutes, ultimately all of this is connected. But right now, given the opportunities to meet the needs that Lisa was talking about through conservation measures to restore the Upper Deschutes has been decided by the group as their first emphasis.
Yeah, so we're calling it Phase One. So the highlighted area on the map represents Phase One of the collaboratives' work. And like Scott mentioned, we, we hope to work in other reaches, of course, in the future, but we're working first and foremost in this reach, basically from WikiUp, the main stem of the Deschutes, all the way down to Lake Billy Chinook, including Tumalo, the Little Deschutes, and Crescent Creek. So.
So you're referring to the yellow?
Yes, the yellow, sorry. Yep.
Okay, I was like going, okay.
Yeah, the, the highlighted area. All right. So one thing I, I wanted to show this to you, because this is something that I believe has come out of, come out of your investment, we have together over the last many months come up with what we're calling the Framework for Action for the Deschutes Basin Water Collaborative. And essentially, this is, shows the tools that we're using to get water where it needs to go. So on the left side of this little graph, we have the supply options. So you'll see like canal piping and irrigation efficiency and demand reduction, like what we're hoping to do with the, with the Deschutes Water Bank pilot. Those are the supply option tools. And then in the middle there, you have the pathways, which are like the legal mechanisms that enable the movement of water. So permanent water rights transfers and in-stream leasing, the allocation of conserved water program, and of course, the mitigation program are all part of the pathways. And then on the right side, you will see the water needs, and you've got the out-of-stream needs with the irrigation districts and the cities, and then the in-stream needs of the different reaches that we're looking to help restore flows. So this is the, the Framework for Action, and we're taking this Framework for Action, and we are going to be putting together a comprehensive water management plan, which is, of course, no small feat with 44, 44 different entities, 44 cooks in the kitchen. So we are working hard on that. And I think at this point, we're looking at, optimistically, I think, a two-year-ish timeframe for developing the comprehensive water management plan. But in addition, during that time, we're also working to help accelerate implementation through various programs in the, in the basin. We're leveraging funding, and we're hoping to support policies that are going to advance the collaboratives' goals and agreements. So, and then as I mentioned, moving forward, we hope to move outside of that main stem, Upper Deschutes region into other reaches and tributaries in the basin. So what is needed? Funding. We always need funding. Increased stakeholder consensus, like I said, 44 cooks in the kitchen and writing a comprehensive management plan requires that we, we achieve consensus. And then really, the goal is to move water around the basin to meet those unmet needs that, that we discussed. So. So how you all can be involved, well, continuing to participate in and support the work of the Deschutes Basin Collaborative is first and foremost on our list. And then continuing to support partner opportunities that arise is also really wonderful. And then I just wanted to give you a big shout out and thanks for the support for the ARPA investment in helping to create the on-farm program and helping farmers to increase program efficiencies or irrigation efficiencies. So we are working full steam ahead on developing that program and in the process of, of dealing with picking priority projects, and I'm hoping that we'll have some implementation projects to tell you about by, I'm assuming in the fall is when we'll start with actual implementation of putting those, those dollars literally in the ground. So, looking forward to another update coming soon on that topic. But thank you all so very much for your support of this program, and we hope you'll continue to support it. There's a lot of really great work that's been done, but there's no shortage of work that needs to be done, considering the ongoing drought and climate shifts that we are, we're witnessing, and we all need water. So, so thank you very much.
Lisa, do you know what is the reading right now at WikiUp? I just haven't read it lately.
I haven't looked at it recently either. Do you remember? I can look it up for you.
Well, I mean, the good news is, what are there? There's like 60 inches of snow at Hoodoo, Mount Bachelor. So, I mean, a couple of years ago, we only had like 32 inches till like March.
Yeah. My understanding is our snowpack is doing okay, but I mean, we haven't had any precipit, we had a little bit last night, but we haven't had any precipitation in 30 days or something like that. So that, and I, somebody told me that Bachelor lost two feet over the last two weeks in, in the snowpack up there. So, and that's somewhat anecdotal. I apologize that I didn't have those numbers, but that was.
Well, I was just wondering.
Yeah. So pray for snow, because we, we definitely need it. And I know that from everything I've heard from Kyle and OWRD folks, I mean, we have no hope of filling WikiUp this year. I mean, we need like a couple, several banner winters to even get to a place where we would think about filling WikiUp. So at this point, looking forward, I think it really is trying to figure out how we can do more with less. And, and that's possible. We have those tools. We just have to work together to, to put those tools into action, and, and I think we can stretch the water that we have to meet all the needs in the basin. But it is going to take, it's going to take everybody working together to make that happen.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Truly, it does take everybody working together.
Yeah, thanks for having us.
Does anybody have any questions?
I, I would like to ask about the, the recent, the, this year's water bank effort. I still, I mean, it, from descriptions I've read in the newspaper, it sounds pretty simple, but, but I'm, I'm not, I'm just not 100% sure if I'm, if I'm tracking fully what's going on. And, you know, to, to make it more confusing, there was, you know, there have been previous water banks in the Deschutes Basin, which I think were pretty different.
Yeah. I unfortunately can't speak to the efforts of previous water banks, at least not with any sort of authority. I can give you a little summary of what we have, what we're piloting this year is essentially for this irrigation, upcoming irrigation season, we have a, we're calling it the Deschutes Water Bank Pilot. And essentially, what we're aiming to do is we are offering a payment, a cash payment to Central Oregon Irrigation District patrons who are willing to follow acres, so essentially like not irrigate on certain acres of their, of their properties in exchange for cash payment. And then that water will be passed along to North Unit, like in. And then, that water will be passed along to North Unit, like in bulk. So, it's not going to be like one property to one property. It's essentially like as much water as we can get from COID patrons, to a certain point. I mean, as much as the, the COID Board has approved for transferring in terms of acres. We will then move that to North Unit, and then, North Unit has agreed to release 25% of that amount of water in the winter, in the upper Deschutes. Yeah, yes. So, that is, that is how it is happening, and we have a, set a deadline of February 15th for applications. There's a deschuteswaterbank.org webpage where folks can go and literally sign up using a very simple questionnaire, just put some basic information in there. And then, it doesn't guarantee participation, because we have to do a vetting with COID as far as like injury and, and just, you know, operational possibilities for being able to have folks wrench their water, basically, I guess is the best way to use it. And yeah, so that, that is the plan, and stay tuned, because we will be very happy to report on how that goes, and we're hoping that it will be successful and that we can expand upon it in future years.
And how, like how, where does the money come from to be able to make the payments to the COID farmers? Is it?
North Unit. North Unit is basically paying for.
North Unit patrons are paying for the water that they're going to get?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, so it is literally a, it is a marketing effort. Like, the COID patrons will be selling their water temporarily, temporarily, voluntarily to North Unit farmers.
So, there's not like a, you know, federal or state money supporting that, supporting those transactions?
No, not at this time, but that is hopefully a great direction in which to, to move in the future. Yeah, so at this point, it's, it's straight up just a, a market from one district to the other.
So, do you remember the percentage of how many people in COID actually flood irrigate?
Ooh.
I mean, I, I was really surprised how, it was rather significant.
It is rather significant, yeah. I don't off the top of my head know that number, but I think you are correct, that I think more people flood irrigate than not. I think it's, it's greater than 50%, but I would need to get back to you to, on that exact number.
I didn't think it was more than 50%, but it was still a lot.
Okay, I, I could have miss, I could have misspoken, so.
Okay.
Write that from the record, but I will look it up for you and get back to you.
Thank you, Lisa. Any questions?
No questions, but thanks for the great effort. Yeah, water's important to everyone, obviously.
Yeah, thank you so much for your investment and support.
Thank you, and you'll send this program, or we can get it in our packet at some point?
The PowerPoint?
The PowerPoint?
Oh, yeah.
I've got it here.
Okay, great, thank you so much. Nice to see you, Scott.
Good to see you.
In person.
I know, it's wonderful to see you in person and to be here in person.
Thanks, everybody.
Other items? Did you want to come back now at this time, Whitney?
Shouldn't wait another 20 minutes or a half hour?
Amazingly fast work, thank you.
You are so efficient.
I'm kind of responsive.
Amazing. I'm just going to run out of the room for a second.
So, the idea of citing behavioral health at that facility is an idea, but are we ready to say we're going to move there? That's a big statement.
It is a big statement, yeah. I would feel much more comfortable if, if we had heard it from our behavioral health staff, that they were ready to do that.
Yeah, we could say, you know, there's future opportunities coordinate services or something, but.
Yeah, that's helpful.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, a whole nother way to phrase this would be basically to say, we need to expand our behavioral health services in Health County, in, in South County, you know, could you fund that? And maybe we're going to use it to co-locate with the Lepine Community Health Clinic.
Well, this is capital for the health center, so let's just keep it to future partnerships
So, do we just take out that sentence?
I think so. I think the request stands on its own regardless of our future plans or intentions. I think it meets a service need in, and I think we're highlighting it as a community need, so I think it could just stand without that last sentence.
Or, or we could just make it, we could say we're in, we're in discussions, or we're exploring it, as opposed to.
Well, but it's an idea up here, but who's, who's exploring that? That's a big.
Well, the, the Lepine Community Health Clinic was, were the ones who put the idea out there. So, they're definitely thinking about it. And I, I mean, I know that, I know that our, our behavioral health folks in South County, they find their current location suboptimal, and, and, you know, there's needed expansion of services, so it's a.
And those are all things to talk about. I'm just saying it's a little premature is what I'm thinking.
Yeah, so I mean, that's, that's why you don't use, I mean, I wouldn't use a word as strong as planning to, but, you know, exploring the idea, or, you know, having some discussions, I think that's okay to put in there.
So, Commissioner Dare, we were just talking about the last sentence of the paragraph, the middle, the first paragraph, I guess, of the Community Health Center. The county plans to cite our behavioral health services at new facility. I just said, oh, wait, you know, that's an idea, it's a concept, but I don't know that we're ready to say that, so that's what we.
Right, if we could just kind of soften it?
Yep, softening. I think I overinterpreted my notes.
Yes, seriously exploring? Oh, yes.
Explore.
It was there before, we might bring it back.
Yeah, maybe, I mean, the county may expand our behavioral health services at the new facility, something like that.
Oh, yeah, I mean, we can have the conversation, it was just a strong statement in the words.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
I mean, I think it makes it stronger, if we, if we demonstrate an interest in, you know, co-delivering services, but.
Well, you say you've identified the $2 million for construction costs. I, I thought that was, the $2 million is money that they actually have set aside for it.
They have, let me pull this back up.
Didn't they have like half a million from their funds, and then they had 1.5 million from some other source, a grant or something?
Oh, I'm just pulling from their written letter. We currently have approximately $2 million dedicated to construction between grants and reserve funds.
Right, yeah. So, that, that little line needs to be a bit reworded. This is really an amazing, you know, oh, 415, 418.
We'll get something in.
I know. Senator, Senator Lyth.
Well, and it, just acknowledging those, those two Lepine projects, those are just totally back of the napkin. I think this kind of money will help numbers. I don't know about the status specific. I know the projects are out there, but contact the city for more information, that's what we're saying.
Bouncing back up to the Lepine Community Health Center, Commissioner Dare, do you feel better about LPHD has $2 million allocated for construction costs? Does that feel?
Right, yes. That sounds better.
And then, Commissioner DeBonne, would you like to pull those rough estimates out of four and five, or leave them in?
Yeah, we might want to, yeah, maybe take the numbers out, you know, because as I say, if we mention the projects, leave them at four and five, City Lepine Transit Center, pedestrian trail improvements, then the city can say, oh, yeah, if we had 50,000 for this, it'd make it work, or whatever the number is.
And they know this, at this time, to be doing something?
For, for projects four and.
The City of Lepine is doing something as we speak, then?
Well, both those projects are proceeding. You know, there's ODOT's partner on the trail, COIC's partner with the city on the transit station. I just talked to one of the councilors recently, so that's why I know, but.
Right.
I don't know their, yeah, so just by name, it'd be good, without the number.
Yeah, we sent an email to staff and just said, we're preparing legislative fiscal asks, and would love to coordinate, and we're, you know, working against a tight timeline, so I'm assuming we'll hear back and can let them, staff know that we mentioned the projects.
That's good. At least we've sent the, the idea.
Yep.
For the Lepine Community Health Center, $2 million, did, did you say allocated?
Yes, would you like to use a different?
I mean, I think secured might be a better word, because, I mean, if you say, yeah, total, total project's going to cost 12 million, you know, 2 million is allocated, they might just say, oh, so within your budget, you, you plan to put 2 million into that, but it's not, I mean, to say secured.
I like secured.
If, if, yeah, if it is in hand, then just, I, I think that's a stronger word.
Do we need to give First Interstate credit? Because they're providing gap funding, so, you know, the gaps may be going to get a little bigger, but.
Yeah, I don't think we need to.
So, you can get that back to us to sign right now?
Yeah, so we'll prepare different versions of these, and then, we will bring them back for signature, if this version, if the rest of it hangs together in a way that feels like it can move forward.
Sounds like, thank you.
I like it.
Definitely.
I know, it's amazing, when I saw those things from Senator Lyth, I'm like, oh, my gosh.
Yeah, we'll bring those copies down for signature, if that's okay, so we can try to get them in by five. Thank you.
No, thank you, Whitney. Thank you so much.
And we have another letter for your consideration. I provided hard copies to Commissioners Dare and Chang this morning, and Commissioner DeBonne this afternoon, since we haven't met yet. This is on the support for House Bill 4123, not, we don't need a signature, I understand the other, the cities have all indicated their support, so, and I do have a copy, if you'd like another copy, if you'd like to see it.
I have the others.
I can bring the copy up.
Sorry, I didn't bring my copy down.
The sentence in here talks about a shared service model, "A model proven to increase efficiency effectiveness and yield the biggest impact in our houseless community members." I don't, what model are we referring to, I guess, you know, I'm just trying to, these are words that we're signing a name to, and I don't know of a model. We're seeing, you know, increased effects of homelessness issues all around the West Coast, so what, what are we referring to there? So, I'm just, less words is better, maybe, is where I would go with that.
Or you could just take out the word, "a model proven," you know. Would facility a shared service model to increase efficiency effectiveness and yield the biggest impact?
Sure, it makes sense.
So, just remove the word proven?
Can we do that, Nick, or, or is this like accepted by all the cities and?
I understand that that letter's been accepted by the cities, but I can still share with Eric Kessler any changes that he's going to make.
Yeah, so if, so this version of the letter's been signed by a bunch of folks already, or?
Good question. He, they sent, they circulated it to us last week, to city managers, and I think I was the only county administrator, and the others had all kind of, had all signed on to the letter conceptually, and I just mentioned at the joint meeting on Friday that I would bring it back for your formal consideration today.
And then, okay, so are, is everybody signing this, or are we just?
I don't see signatures. I think it's just using the logos as a, with the letter as an indication of support.
Yeah, I'm supportive. And yeah, with a little bit of feedback, but if it doesn't get changed, that's fine, too.
Can our insignia be a bigger? I'm kidding.
Let's cozy all the wrong ones together like that.
Right in the middle.
I've got a couple of those stickers on my door, but I don't have them all, so it's fun to see them all together around.
Oh, good, and they have the, the cities in alphabetical order, so that's good. So, are we okay with this then? We're okay?
Yeah.
Okay, do we need a vote or anything?
If others are open to, you know, taking out those words, "a model proven," that you could read just as well, but.
I, I think a motion with a vote is just helpful to provide the direction, and I'll share that.
So, should it be a motion as with suggested amendment, or, or?
I haven't seen the letter. I'm talking about, to be honest with you.
There's basically like three words that we could take out.
So, a letter, I'll move a letter of support for House Bill 4123 in coordination with the cities.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Mr. DeBonne?
Yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair of Chess.
Well, yeah, now, it mentions the bill number, and we'll go from there.
Okay. So, anything else? Can we go to executive now?
I've got a couple of things. Sun River Lepine Economic Development Annual Lunch, Josh Lerner, State Economist, this is going to be at the Sun River Resort, April 5th, April 5th. So, the ask is, would the Deschutes County want to purchase a table? Remember, already a big supporter, but a table just means a table of eight for $500, and I'd be, you know, I'll make sure I'll be attending. But if we had some other staff wanted to join us, we could, you know, kind of have a nice little outing at Sun River. And it's exciting, you know, Lepine itself has got a lot of activity these days, so this is about the time to really pay attention. Sun River is a great partner in this. So, the ask is, do we want to buy a $500 table for this event, April 5th?
Which is a Tuesday night?
It's a lunch.
Oh, it's a lunch, okay, Tuesday, okay, good. Sounds like a great idea.
So, yeah, is there support for that, though? Yeah, so we'll, we'll proceed as presented on that, and I don't know if we need to vote on that either, but.
You're fine.
Yeah, okay, so Eastern Oregon EOC, it was a meeting today, I guess, and I dialed in at 10 o'clock, and there was a presentation on Western Resources Legal Center Discussion, Caroline Lobel, Lobedell. Commissioner Dare, were you involved with that meeting at all?
I was on the first half of it. The meeting actually started at 9:00 AM. So, I was on the first half, and then, when I saw you, you took over for the second.
Okay, okay. And so, Commissioner Chang, just so you see how this is happening, so this is Eastern Oregon Counties Association Published Board Meeting. I had it on for 10 o'clock, I didn't have anything for 9 o'clock, so I don't know what that was.
They changed it.
Okay, so I didn't even have that. And maybe there's an email that I haven't seen yet, okay. So, but it was a really interesting, and a little bit of information about coordination and collaboration, you know, Forest Land Policy Management Act, National Forest Management Act, what does really coordination mean? So, it, it kind of gets down to it. The, really, the suggestion was if, so remember, I'm involved because I would like to know that if we're going to be partners updating the Deschutes County, not the county, but the Deschutes Forest Plan, the federal government's National Forest Plan, I want to understand the big picture. So, they mentioned that, you know, putting together a Natural Resources Committee, kind of the official Natural Resources Committee, which I don't think we do specifically, we'd need to figure out our purpose, and, you know, what we'd want to do that for, adopt resolutions, understanding our position on land use management, because then that's where coordination can be referenced to, is Deschutes County or a county's resolutions about land use management and priorities. And then, having that in place provides persistence for resolving inconsistencies. So this is, it got really legal at one point, but just having some of that in place. So it's just, that's what I learned today during that session.
Will that, will her presentation be available?
Yeah, it's all recorded, it's available. The PDFs of it and the recorded session.
All right.
So, what are the implications of this for Deschutes County?
As I say.
Are you suggesting we become a coordination county?
Well, I don't understand what that term is. Coordination county? We don't have a Deschutes Forest Plan update. Someday that's going to happen. So is that what you're referring to, is if we did a?
No, that coordination and forest planning are not, they are not intertwined.
Yeah, so I don't know what that term means, what you're saying.
You, well, I thought you said that the Western Resource Law Center talked about the difference between coordination and collaboration. And coordination is a policy approach that's being pursued by a handful of counties around the western United States, where basically, counties are claiming special status in relation to federal land management agencies, where, you know, they're saying, we as a county are basically above other stakeholders in, you know, federal land management planning processes, and you need to coordinate directly with us, as opposed to talking to, you know, all the members of the public, or, you know, any kind of organization or group. And I find that, you know, in my opinion, you know, a smart forest supervisor, a smart district ranger, does give special attention to county elected officials, but in an informal way, as opposed to, you know, you know, somebody from the county level trying to legally claim that they have exalted or special status in federal land management decision-making, which I think is actually pretty legally questionable. But it is, you know, coordination is an approach that is embraced by, by some counties, and, you know, I'm hearing the report back from that, that meeting, and, you know, that's my first concern, is that there are people encouraging more counties to kind of get on the coordination bandwagon, because I don't think it's an appropriate pathway for Deschutes County.
Oh, that's informative, thank you very much. And I can see there's layers to this of, we want to do good things for the people, understanding the historical practices of land utilization. Grazing is always a big thing, that we don't do as much here, obviously. We think of this as the goose that lays the golden egg because of the recreation opportunity. Forest management, fuel reduction, WU interface, you know, timber products, so, I mean, yeah, the different issues are around. But, yeah, so, but that's good that you explain the coordination, so, yeah, coordination, you're saying in quotes, is, can be a legal term that's not agreed upon by everybody.
Yeah.
See, that, I mean, they didn't say that today, obviously.
And a number of our, a number of our, you know, colleague Eastern Oregon counties are coordination counties. Yeah, I actually had a debate, basically, with people about this at the last AOC Natural Resources Steering Committee meeting, because they wanted, they wanted coordination integrated into the mission and goals for the steering committee for the, for the year, and removal, like stripping away other language about things like collaboration and other policy approaches. They were sort of saying, I want, that they wanted coordination to be the one way that, the one kind of pathway that that county has pursued, and I strongly disagreed with that.
Okay, he needs it before 4:45, I just emailed, text Senator Lithgow, too.
Okay, well, yeah, so that was very valuable, we can.
Thank you, Whitney.
Sign a proposed, you know, thing here.
If you want to start and pass.
Okay, got it. Well, I'm just, yeah, I'm going to sign one, and then I'll read it, so we can get it going here.
Okay, well, I'm glad I sent him a message.
Here's a signed one, and the other one, and the copy of it. Oh, how many did you make?
There's one for each.
Oh, oh, this is a whole stack of them.
Yeah.
Took me a moment. A moment. Wait, we're supposed, oh, for each, each legislature.
Smart, Whitney.
I'm trying to figure out what we got here. The county may expand its behavioral health services after the facility. There we go.
That's all right.
Yes. Well, and I'm sure we'll provide services, if there's a place for it.
Whitney, I think you're just going to make it.
Well, Laura's prepping the email, so I think with Laura and Morgan's help, we will make it.
Look, I'm going to do the scanner, so, do we want to formalize that? Is that, we need to do that still? So I'll move approval of letters to our state legislators about fiscal opportunities of investment by the legislature.
Last one?
Yes, last one, right?
Yes.
Okay. Wonderful.
Is there any other name to that thing?
Oh, you made the motion. Did you second it?
No, second.
Any further discussion, Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Mr. Chang? And the Chair of the Chaffs? Go, Whitney. Oh, my gosh. Three, 436. Who's counting?
One more thing. So, remember the concept of homeless, but also campgrounds and people that need places, places for people, and there's the opportunity for federal land somewhere possibly to add another campground, as in, we've got lake resorts, we've got campgrounds in a few places. What if we talk to our federal partners about just setting a campground somewhere in the central Oregon area, perimeter of a large city possibly, like Bend, talking to Forest Service and BLM? So my proposal to my fellow commissioners and for Deschutes counties to take the lead on a feasibility study, you know, what if somebody walked around with the papers and said, what if we put a campground here? What are the rules? Would there be a cost-effective way to do it? And I'm not talking low barrier, I'm talking market rate campground, the vision is, and I've mentioned the vision maybe before, about just a, you know, partially developed rural campground, possibly electricity at sites, you know, septic disposal, standpipe for water if possible. So it's, you know, it would be utilized by people coming to town, van life people, and it'd be that, just that buffer shock absorber place for camping. So the proposal is, we look into that, just ask staff to do that, and figure out what a feasibility contract might look like, you know, spending some kind of money on that.
The challenge with looking at federal sites is if you want, there's, you know, there's a, you know, nationwide law that says you can disperse camp, or you can camp in a campground on federal lands, but only for two weeks. And so if you actually wanted the campground sites to function more like kind of temporary housing, the two-week constraint would apply. I mean, it's technically true for all of the places where people dispersed camp on federal land who are homeless, who, you know, they're not supposed to, they're not supposed to stay in any one spot for more than two weeks. Now, we know that that's not happening, but.
More like two years, three years?
But, you know, in that case, it's basically a situation that, you know, the Forest Service knows it can't fix, so they're not, you know, they're not, they're not enforcing that as aggressively, but we couldn't, they wouldn't be able to open a campground with the, where they explicitly said, oh, and, you know, you're not allowed to camp, you know, you're, you can stay here as long as you want. Like, they would, you know, if you open an official campground, then they have to, they have to follow the same law that, you know, all the, all the Forest Service campgrounds across the nation follow. So if that was a piece of your interest, kind of like a long, you know, places where people can camp longer term, then that, basically, federal policy is, eliminates all the federal land sites opportunities.
It's a market rate campground, it's a shock absorber, it's a buffer, it's a place for people to be. Two weeks is better than nothing.
Okay, so, I mean, you're just looking for a regular recreational-type campground. Well, that, I mean, that aligns with the interest that I have in doing a feasibility study for our site up north. There's, yeah, so I had a pretty in-depth discussion with some people from the State Park Department, who let me know, you know, I put out the idea of needing to do a feasibility study, and they said, well, a lot of the data that you're talking about wanting to collect is actually already available in the, I forget what ESCORP stands for, but, you know, there's basically a statewide recreation plan, a SCORP plan. And so, the, in that SCORP plan, I haven't had, I haven't had a chance to go and look at it, but there's, there's data about kind of the, the demand for campsites in our county, and, you know, kind of how many campsites there actually are, so showing the delta between those things. And then you kind of, you know, you throw in a few assumptions about, you know, that the cost to develop it, the incentives that are available, and there are incentives from the state, you know, the price you would charge, and et cetera, and, you know, you've got your, it wouldn't take very much to do an economic feasibility study, and I am, I am very interested in us doing that. Now, the other half of it might be site-specific, kind of like, let's take a look at a specific spot, and see if, you know, it's suitable from like a traffic perspective, and environmental impacts, and those kinds of things, recreational amenities, would people want to be here? So, you know, hearing, hearing about your interest in feasibility, like, we could, you could do, you know, you could, for example, you'd do that first part, just kind of what's the demand, what would people will be willing to pay, in a generic way, and then have a couple of sites considered for, you know, site suitability, you know, for the other end of the feasibility study, if you're interested in doing that. The other thing I learned from the folks at State Parks is that if we do it, if the county does this, there are, there are grants available for planning and implementation, and then also, the tax that is charged on the sale of RVs, they put that in a pool, and then depending on how many RV camps, every RV-suited campsites the county owns and operates, we get a proportion of that RV tax every year. So there's, there's sort of built-in an incentive to, you know, to open some, open, you know, some number of RV sites in a county RV park, so that we can get, you know, our fair share of that, of that pot of RV sale tax money. And that's, that would be another thing that goes into the feasibility study, if it was a county site, you know, that, you know, basically, there'd be the revenue that you would get from, you know, people paying to stay there, but then you also essentially get a cut of this state money to, you know, to operate and maintain that RV park and those sites on an annual basis.
So it sounds like there's support for our ideas. I mean, so giving direction to staff to say, let's go look into these things, is all we need to do today.
Okay, but, I mean, so the idea I put, I'm putting out there, like, the site suitability piece, I know of a specific spot that I want us to explore right away, so, I mean, that feasibility study, we could do, I mean, you know, it'd take a couple of days to put together a scope of work, you know, and a bid opportunity, but we could put that out in days.
Well, and I'm thinking.
While if there's other sites we want to look at, then that will, we should wait for as long as we want, for as long as it takes to identify a couple of other sites we'd want to look at. So I, I would really like to proceed quickly, and like, do a site analysis on one site, but we could postpone that for any number, you know, any number of weeks or months, to add sites and do a more comprehensive study later on. I think the first, the first part, just the raw economics of it, you know, like, what does it cost to build, and how much could you, you know, how much demand is there, what, you know, what, you know, basically, how revenue neutral or revenue positive could this be? I think that that's worth doing very quickly.
I'm just looking, I don't know, you're, are we going to direct staff to look into some feasibility study opportunities? I mean, I understand you've thought it through a lot, but I, I'm not asking for that much input right now. I'm just saying, are we all agreement that we want to maybe do some of this stuff? And then we can get the list of stuff on a piece of paper in the near future.
Sure, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Dare?
Well, I had a, what is a word? Disappointing, you know, when I called the RV parks, and the one called me back, and they wanted to expand, and we met with them, and we've already determined that, oh, gosh, it's going to be really hard. Remember how we had the list and everything? Okay, and one of them did call me back, and I was so excited, and we're still working on it. So, you know, I'm willing to keep reaching out there and see what we can do.
I spoke to Forest Service and BLM leadership locally today, and they're both, you know, supportive of the idea of looking into this, and understanding, you know, the rules and regulations they have also. You know, it's, we're not looking for anything special here, but man, there may be an opportunity just to, to, you know, give some clarity to what the possibilities are out there, is my thought.
Okay.
Yeah, and all of those entities that operate campgrounds would be great entities to have kind of around the table with us while we do a feasibility study. They have a, they have a keen interest in dealing with the overflow, you know, at their, they're currently over, over-capacity campground.
Great, so, good input on the discussion there.
Yes, we're planning to come back, I think it's on February 9th, to talk about some of the priorities, well, not some, but all the priorities the board mentioned at the retreat, including the campground concept, so we can also discuss it again at that point. And we mentioned federal lands, so we're already, based on Commissioner Chang's suggestion for a different project about reaching out to federal agencies to explore land for another purpose, this would be a good conversation to include with that, so we had a couple topics to discuss with BLM and Forest Service. And then the other question I would have was, would you also like for us to take a look at state lands? I mean, there are a lot of state parks in addition to what we see on a lot of federal lands. Do you want us to kind of have the sweep of one concept?
Anything, even private lands. I mean, you know, at this point, it's really waking ourselves up to the fact that, oh, we kind of didn't, didn't advocate or, you know, offer support for those existing land uses. And maybe, maybe the people don't want that, but, I mean, it just seems like a transfer area, you know, a family coming in, wanting to see, you know, grandma and grandpa coming in in their big rig, wanting to see the kids, and they have nowhere to park while they're near the city of Bend. You know, I mean, just there's scenarios out there that are, you know, not homeless issues or anything, just, just issues.
Are near the city of Lapine, don't forget.
Well, I'm just saying, anywhere. No, in Lapine, you just camp out in the woods.
Okay.
No, there are lots, you just park in the next to the house.
Okay, that's always good.
I'm just joking. Okay.
All right. So, are we, can we go into executive now?
I have a mouth berry, is that someone?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Mouth berry, is that someone?
No. Well, go ahead and say what's happening, why somebody might be dropped there.
Okay, we are now going into executive session, I believe.